Harry, stuff should be t-shirts.
But this is the set I don't know if I can ask you to do.
Okay, Madam Clerk, I'd like to start the meeting.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Patterson Municipal Council, I welcome you to the regular meeting of the Municipal Council. This evening, we, I don't want to say celebrating, but in honor of 9/11, we will have Dean of our Council read a resolution that was stated, but that'll be after the statement of compliance. At this time, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Yes, Madam Clerk. Good evening, everyone. Roll call for the municipal council, my ability, second, I would like to read it in seven minutes. Councilmember Abbott, please.
Here.
Councilmember, yes?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Present.
Councilwoman?
Here.
Councilwoman Ford?
Here.
Councilwoman Lee?
Here.
Councilwoman Rader?
Here.
Here.
Councilwoman Gray, Madam President.
Present.
And President, in honor of the councilmembers, we have the most in-house criminal prayer issued by Pastor Neil Condes, Condes, and these young people here, and also the leaders in this class who did break through and found the practice, please return to your chair. Everyone, please rise to the front of the conference.
To me, it's a great honor to be here, sending off all of you guys this evening. Early, you mentioned about 9/11, and it's not a celebration, it's just to remember those that lost their life day like today. Imagine that 17 years ago, thousands of family members were looking for their loved ones between dust, blood, and tears. And today, I promise you, I don't going to get you to stand up for a long time, but I want everybody in this room to acknowledge where we've been, or how low we've been going when it comes to violence. And it's not just 9/11 that reflects the, how low we've been going through violence, and how it's affecting our work. But if we're going back to the Dominican Republic about a year ago, and we see the young lady that was murdered by her fiance and dumped in luggage like an animal, maybe worse than it. But what about June 20th, in the Bronx, a young man was killed without the privilege of at least being identified like the right victim? And maybe we say, well, we are living in a violent society. But I understand that violence doesn't start in the streets. Violence starts in our family. Violence starts when we turn around and we forget about the loved ones that we have at home. Violence starts when our kids wants to talk to us, but we too busy at work. So today, instead of praying about, instead of praying so we can become more acknowledgeable of the violence that we are facing in our society, I believe that we need to pray for the unity of our family, so our kids can become better young ones, better people, better workers. And today that we are acknowledging, not just the people that lost their life in 9/11, but we acknowledging a young man that is raised in this community. As a citizen of the city of Patterson, I feel honored to be here. And the best way that we can honor it is giving God the opportunity to be first in our life and in our families as well. So to everybody, I believe it's a great opportunity, not just to remember 9/11, but to remember what we have at home and say, "I thank God for you." It can be your wife, it can be your son, it can be your daughter, it can be your family member, somebody that you haven't spoken in a while, but he's related to you. Let's pray. Father God, we thank you on this evening. Thank you because I understand that you have a purpose in each one of our life. We thank you because without you, there's nothing that we can do. And right now, we are opening our hearts to give you all our wisdoms, all our desire. And we ask you, Lord, to take control, not just about, not just for our city, but also from our family. The only way that we can stop what's going on out there is fixing what's going on within. Bless our family, and bless each individual in this room. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank you so much.
At this time, I'd like to have a moment of silence. It was a day like today 17 years ago that we lost over 3,000 people, first responders, sons and daughters, mothers who left their homes and never came back. I also would like a moment of silence for Kevin Milfer, who is the stepson of Louis Velez and the son of Evelyn Sanchez, and to anyone else who has lost a loved one. A moment of silence, thank you. Thank you, you may have a seat. Madam Clerk, if you can please read the statement of compliance.
Yes, Madam President. Statement of compliance with open for reading to our twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, dated 2011, two thousand and eighteen, time seven minutes. As the court goes on this meeting, it was five in this time of meeting. In accordance with the open for reading to God in following acts, one, the annual of the record meetings and worship session of the municipal council from past four years, twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, under article nine, first twenty. Two, is scheduled the regular meetings and worship sessions of the municipal council from year twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, with due time limited under article nine, first twenty. Two, with the church we have to leave, the writer, the Italian voice, the J. Company House, the McCallum, the theater international, the experience, the Panis Press, and the C. Posthumous, in addition to any other publication who is requested, such as this. Three, the schedule of the regular meetings and worship sessions of the municipal council from year twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen was probably to be posted in the number of three of the first floor in a place reverse for the announcements of this pack. Four, the schedule of the regular meetings and worship sessions of the municipal council from year twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen was due to file with the municipal. Five, the copy of the scheduled regular meetings of the municipal council was made to any person who requests it, and they are to be authorized by the open for reading pack, regular pack. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, at this time, I'd like a motion for payment of bills.
Yes, the committee met today.
Councilman Rivera.
Thank you. Yes, we reviewed the bills list in the finance committee meeting. Total payment of bills is $10,167,348.57, of which $4,777,978.76 is for payroll, and $3,496,876.08 is for the school district. Bless you.
Thank you, can I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Rivera, second by Councilman Colick. Roll call, payment of bills, Madam Clerk.
The one for payment of bills is in the amount of $10,167,348.57. Councilmember Abbott, please.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
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 The one with eighty favor, one action, payment of bills, hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council members, at this time, we'll be looking at our second reading ordinances. Madam Clerk?
The second reading ordinance is of second reading.
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, I, my mistake. I'd like Councilman, as I mentioned earlier, Councilman McCoy will be reading the 9/11 resolution that was drafted back in 2001. Okay, 17 years ago. Councilman McCoy?
Thank you, Council President. Council members, members of the public, I think this is probably the first time that the regular council meeting is being held on September 11th. And I know we had a ceremony this morning recognizing the significance of that event, but I thought it would be prudent and appropriate to read a resolution that was drafted dated September 25th, 2001, resolution declaring a message of comfort to the United States and to all those who have suffered from the World Trade Center attack. This resolution was introduced by myself, whereas we, the members of the City of Patterson Municipal Council, joined with, at that time, Mayor Barnes, Mayor Giuliani, Governor Pataki, Governor DeS Francisco, President Bush, and indeed, the entire nation, in expressing our deep and profound sorrow for your unimaginable loss. And whereas we weep and mourn with you at this time of immense human trial and test of spirit, and whereas while we are not able to fully comprehend the totality of your pain and grief, we, the members of Municipal Council, want you to know that we share as much as humanly possible the burden of your incredible grief and sorrow. And whereas, as Americans of all faith and belief, we collectively send our prayers and support to the families of the victims, as well as to our rescuers, members of fire and police departments, EMTs, medical support teams, and many volunteers, asking God, asking that God will continue to uphold them in His mighty hands. And whereas the events of the day have only strengthened our resolve as Americans and has fortified our commitment to the principles of freedom and liberty we hold so dearly, without question, and we will continue to allow the light of our indelible spirit to shine eternal as a beacon of our freedom and democracy for the world to see. And whereas we pray that the God of heaven bless the families of the victims and our beloved United States of America, as we together persevere through this time of peril and pain, confident in the knowledge that though weeping may endure for a long and bitter night, joy will surely come in the morning. And whereas the blessings of God on these United States, we shall be stronger, closer, and more determined as a nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now therefore be it resolved by the Municipal Council of the City of Patterson that the Municipal Council wishes to declare the above message of comfort to the United States and to all those who have suffered from the World Trade Center attack. This item was moved by Councilman McCoy, and seconded by then-Councilman Torres, signed and approved by the council members at that time, Verdi Ames, Councilwoman Ames, Councilman Azlan Gow, Councilwoman Mary Lee Jackson, Councilman Jeffrey Jones, Councilman William Klein, Councilman McCoy, as I indicated, Councilman Thomas Rooney, Councilman Jose Torres, and Councilman Juan Torres, and signed by Council President at the time, Mary Lee Jackson, and our Honorable Count, Madam Jane E. Warren, as our City Clerk. Council President, I thank you for the opportunity, as we collectively recognize and salute those who have laid their lives down to preserve our liberty even in the fear of terror and the threat that represented 9/11. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman McCoy. Madam Clerk, at this time, we'll start off with the second reading ordinances.
Yes, Madam President. Second reading ordinance, item number one, first item, and the public hearing is required, is called, is named, East 21st Street, between 20th Avenue and Martin Street, in one district, not, of the first, is number eighteen, of the first one.
Moved.
Okay. Councilman Abdelaziz, you moved it?
Yes.
Second by Councilman Colick. Councilwoman Mims? Councilwoman Mims. Okay, at this time, the public portion is open for item number one.
See no one.
Hearing, I'm sorry, the public hearing.
See no one.
See no one. Move to close.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Councilwoman Cotton, second by Councilman Colick. Roll call, Madam Clerk, to close the public hearing.
The one for the public hearing, item number one, Councilman Abbott, please.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rader?
Yes.
Yes.
The one with eighty favor, one action, public hearing is hereby closed in item number one.
Roll call, Madam Clerk, there isn't any questions on item number one?
Roll call on item number one for second reading. Councilman Abbott, please.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rader?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
The one with eighty favor, one action, item number one is hereby adopted on second reading.
Item number two, Madam Clerk?
Yes, this item is item number two for second reading, public hearing is required. Item number two, reason ordinance establishing a fifteen minute parking zone in 22nd Avenue between East 31st Street and East 34th Street, public access license eighteen, zero point two.
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Abdelaziz. Is second by Councilman Colick. This time, the public hearing is open.
See no.
Item number two.
See no one, move to close.
Second. Moved by Councilman Colick, second by Councilwoman Cotton. Roll call, Madam Clerk, to close the public hearing on item number two.
Roll call for the public hearing, item number two, Councilman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rader?
Yes.
The one with eighty favor, one action, public hearing is hereby closed in item number two.
Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number two.
Roll call on item number two for second reading, Councilman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rader?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
The one with eighty favor, one action, item number two is hereby adopted on second reading.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number three, for second reading?
Yes, this item is item number three for second reading, public hearing is required, and ordinance establishing a commercial loan in London Broadway between East 18th Street and Madison Avenue, public access license number eighteen, zero point three.
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Abdelaziz, second by Councilwoman Mims. This time, the public hearing is open on second reading ordinance, item number three.
See no one, move to close.
Second. Moved by Councilman Colick, second by Councilwoman Cotton. Roll call to close the public hearing on item number three on second reading ordinance.
Roll call for the public hearing, item number three, Councilman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rader?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
The one with eighty favor, one action, public hearing is hereby closed in item number three.
Roll call, Madam Clerk, second reading ordinance, item number three.
Roll call on item number three for second reading, Councilman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rader?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
The one with eighty favor, one action, item number three is hereby adopted on second reading.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. At this time, I'll take the consent agenda.
The item agenda is of consent agenda, item, item four through third. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be rooted by the council and will be acted out of one motion. The item listed on the consent agenda are numbered four through third, and the item may be removed on the consent agenda by request of any of the members, and the law will be treated as a separate matter.
Some moved.
Second. Moved by Councilwoman Mims, second by Councilwoman Cotton. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on items number four through thirty-four on consent agenda. Am I correct? Yes.
Roll call on item number four through third, for the consent agenda, Councilman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rader?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
The one with eighty favor, one action, item four through third, for hereby adopting on consent agenda.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, at this time, I'd like to open up the public portion. Can you please let me know how many speakers?
Yes, Madam President. Ten speakers.
Okay, this time, please call the first speaker.
The public portion is not open, and the first speaker is Mr. Teague, and is your name addressed for the record?
Corey Teague, sixty-five Prince Street, Patterson, New Jersey. I wanted to start off by sending my condolences to, first of all, Councilman Velez. I can't even begin to imagine what that would feel like, I may even try to, but I'm just praying that God will strengthen him, his wife, and the family. And also to, we know that this is a day where we remember an unspeakable evil. And I know that there's all different kinds of debates back and forth about who did what and why, and where, none of that matters at the end of the day, when you consider that there was almost 3,000 people killed, 6,000 more injured. It's a lot of families that were impacted by what took place on that day. What we do know is that it was the result of hatred and the result of an unprecedented evil. Evil has no race, creed, color, or religion. And one of the things that I'm glad about is that despite how terrible that day was for us, we found a way to overcome it and push through it. The pain doesn't go away, the scar doesn't go away, but you learn to live the next day and push on forward. When I'm in the city and I go to that new structure they have at the World Trade Center, and you see the folks walking around and moving around and shopping in the center there, and going on about their lives and getting on the train, you see that people, even though they were hurt by what took place, they didn't allow it to scar them to the point where they became immobile and unable to continue on with their lives. So if there's anything we can take away from this day that we come to unify as one to remember and reflect, there's one thing we can remember is that we have to keep the faith, even when it doesn't seem plausible at the moment, even when we're at our darkest hour, we have to learn how to hold our head up high and keep pushing forward. That's the one thing that we need to remember. And together, as one unit, and as one nation, even despite, we know what's going on with the leadership of our nation, there's nothing you can do about that, that's politics. But the people in this country, we can still band together and still move forward. That's the message that we need to make sure that our children know and our grandchildren, because things like this cause us to reflect on the fact that we're not going to be here forever. So when we are gone, we have to, we have to come to grips with, either we're going to leave them with a memory or a legacy. And the legacy you want to leave them with is that despite how bad things were or how tough things were, you continue to persevere, you continue to hold on, you continue to move forward. That's the message that we need to make sure our children understand, our grandchildren and future generations. So I just want to say blessings to everybody, and I know this is a harrowing day, and this is a somber day and a day when we come to reflect, but just understand that there is a bright side and that we'll continue to persevere. Seventeen years in the making, but we're still here and we're still pushing forward. That speaks volumes about who we are and what we're capable of doing. God bless.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, second speaker?
Yes, Madam President. One next speaker, Mr. Elvis Dorham?
Mr. Elvis Dorham, from Patterson, New Jersey, 283 Broadway, Fourth Ward. Before I make my announcements, just want to say, I had a good weekend getaway to Franklin, Virginia, and I represent Patterson very well. I was live in concert, Labor Day weekend. I just want to thank my three sponsors on the City Council and the City of Patterson. Council President, Marissa Daria, I just want to say thank you, I want to come up here live and say thank you for sponsoring me this year going to Franklin, Virginia. Councilwoman of the Fourth Ward, my Councilwoman of the Fourth Ward, Ruby Cotton, just want to say thank you for sponsoring me this year, 2018. And Councilman of the Fourth Ward, Michael Jackson, want to say thank you for sponsoring me this year, 2018, and also for staying and for me at the program over here in Patterson, and the young people really were very excited for you to show up. Amen? Elvis Dorham, Outreach Music Productions, and the Greater Assembly, Hode House of Prayer presents, Christian Mania 2018. This is going to be held at the Greater Assembly, Hode House of Prayer, 62-66 Arch Street, A-R-C-H Street, Patterson, New Jersey. Pastor Apostle Joseph T. Robertson, Sr., is the pastor. Friday, September 28th at 7:30 PM. Saturday, September 29th at 7:30 PM. And Sunday, September 30th at 5 o'clock PM. Three days only. Special guest speaker will be Reverend Joseph T. Robertson, Jr. And y'all know him. He's a big humble guy. Pastor Apostle Joseph T. Robertson, Senior, is the pastor. Friday, September twenty-eighth at seven thirty P. M. Saturday, September twenty-ninth at seven thirty P. M. And Sunday, September thirtieth at five o'clock P. M. Three days only. Special guest speaker will be Reverend Joseph T. Robertson, Junior. And y'all know him. He's a big humble guy, big man in the community, and a lot of youth and a lot, yeah, a lot of people on the Fourth Ward represent him. He do a lot of stuff for the community. Reverend Joseph T. Robertson, Junior, will be the special guest speaker for three nights at Christian Mania this year right here in the city of Patterson, New Jersey. And before I sit down, just want the city of Patterson, New Jersey to know, I do have a new album coming out, a new gospel album, and it will be out the third week of November, so I'm looking for my city to support me. Amen? And I want y'all to pray for me. Amen? God bless you and peace.
Madam Clerk, next speaker.
Yes, Madam President. Next speaker is, I think it's Maltev T. Wokal?
Good night. My name is Maltev Wokal. I live at one oh three Sherman Street, Potake, New Jersey. I, I am, I am here to say thank you for having me up here. I know today is a great tragedy seventeen years ago. I was actually ten footsteps away from the World Trade Center when I turned around. On the bus back up here, they announced what happened, so someone up there is watching down for everyone. I am here to actually promote something I'm doing for Patterson. We're doing a dinner and jazz night at Masonic Temple, two twenty-four Broadway. It's hosted by Manifesting Miracles in the World. We're doing this for the veterans, the homeless, and for cancer, lupus also. And this is something that we have been trying to do for a while. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that we have going on, but we have to not forget the minor things aside that builds up the city. This actually is a project that we've been doing for a while. We've been here trying to get stuff going. We tried to get shelters, we tried to get emergency systems for people who need it in the winter, which we need a lot of that recently, the past couple of years. This year, actually, we're trying to do a lot more. We're trying to raise money to give a lot of people shelter for homeless. We have a lot of people last year who was turned down for winter with kids. No one wanted to shelter them at all. It was upon us to take what we had and put them up in hotels. This year, we wanna raise funds for that. So this program is really, really dedicated to all of them. Dinner Jazz Night, hosted by Manifesting Miracles in the World, F and M Women of Enhancement, performance by Greg Capers, Roman Junior, A T L and Randy Jackson, venue Integrity Mason Temple, two twenty-four Broadway, Patterson. The price is forty dollars, fifty dollars in advance. Contact eight six two six eight six four eight two five or nine seven three nine three zero eight hundred. October sixth, two thousand and eighteen, times seven P. M. to eleven thirty P. M. Attire black and white. A portion of our funds will go to lupus, cancer, and the veterans. And special thanks to Elvis Chichman. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much for that information. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Madam President. My next speaker is, I'm doing a.
Please state your name.
Bless us to get through this nine-one-one situation. But I'm here to address the situation deal with the Amistad Act, and I heard you are the liaison with the Board of Education. The Amistad Act is important. You talk about all the people who suffered. There's some African-Americans that suffered for four hundred years, and in that pleasant legend that says freedom, justice, and equality, we haven't got it yet, especially in the Education Department. So I would like you to come out and be a strong supporter of that Amistad, 'cause our children are suffering out here. And they only suffering from misbehaved information, no, misinformed information to misbehaved behavior. My man was saying violence started in the house. No, violence was invited in the house with tell, lie, visit. And I hope you can understand what I'm saying when I say tell, lie, visit. 'Cause when you start lying in people's eyes and their perception, take on that destruction, it's only a matter of time before they become destructive. All of us, some of us might have been here, but majority of us was here when Mission Impossible was here. There was an episode in Mission Impossible when the guy was in the booth with the tape and the pictures. And the tape gave all the information. Now, what did the tape say in the end? After I give you this information, you gonna self-destruct. After we got some European information, we crazy as that. So sister, I need you to come support us strongly. And also the mothers that's out there in the audience, we need, the fathers, we need you. Because the only way to save our children is to give them a proper education of who they are. And we need to know, or they need to know, that they was kings and queens, not shackles like slaves. They don't teach about the Moors. They don't teach about Imhotep who taught the Greeks and the Romans, Aristotle, Plato, and all them. The reason why, they don't wanna build their dignity to a point where they can be a productive member of society. I've been in this community sixty-five years. When I started school, it was all about Europe. I'm not a European. I need to learn about me, so don't deny our children that information. And the reason why I'm sharing this, sister, 'cause I need you strongly. 'Cause I went to the board meeting and I heard Ms. Schaefer say this here, we gonna connect with the city so we can get more money. We don't have a money damn problem. We have a thinking problem. We killing each other left and right with no remorse. So we gotta do something about that. And that ain't just a board of education problem, that's a city problem. This is the first time I ever seen, I think back in the days when Michael Galaza, and then was the, he was the superintendent, where both of them worked together. When the state took over, that shit fell apart. But watch your mouth, Abdo. That stuff fell apart. Now that we have our locale back, let's do something with it and save our children. 'Cause if we don't, one of us gonna get shot by accident.
Mr. President, can I respond?
Councilwoman.
So hi, Brother Abdul. I'm glad you're here on tonight. So let me just be clear. I am the Chair of Education. And we've been meeting. We're working on doing some collaborative efforts with the school district, myself, the committee, as well as Ms. Schaefer. And so we have some joint collaborative meetings, we have some great efforts underway, that we're gonna have a press release that will be coming out soon. We're also gonna have Ms. Schaefer, we're gonna invite her here to the council to do a presentation as relates to the two-year transition to local control, what that plan looks like, how it affects our city, as well as the curriculum, all those issues. So we've been meeting. It's been very productive. We have a committee. I'm the Chair, but there is a committee, but we still are a nine-body council. But I'm really grateful for the efforts that are underway as we work collaboratively together. I think it's something that's very much needed. As you know, I'm a former school board commissioner, and I love our kids. I believe our children deserve to learn. I've been saying it for a long time, that it's not just a school district's issue, but it's a citywide issue. And so we have some great stuff underway. I don't wanna release everything just yet, but there's also a committee. I will take your information. And I know that there's an Amistad Curriculum Team-
Yeah, I'm on that team.
-that was, that was put together, and I talk to the host, the Chair, which is Mr. Capers, all the time. But that was a push. I worked when I was on the board to ensure that it was implemented and we started it, but he's pushing for full implementation. So I'll definitely get your information, and we can definitely work together, and whatever we're doing, I'll make sure you're a part of it. But we're here for the kids, we're here for the adults, and we're also here for the seniors, but thank you for your response tonight.
Yeah, and one thing too, the Amistad Act shouldn't be on the menu. It should be on the table.
Right, I agree. Thank you, sir.
Madam Clerk, next speaker.
Yes, Madam President. Next speaker is Mr. Miguel Palazzo.
Next speaker.
Tom Fuscaldo, Frickness Avenue, when I am Patterson. Patterson has a new mayor. I, of all people, am suggesting to our new mayor a move that will help the people and make him look good because he can actually do good. Years ago, Patterson had a very bad Mayor Kramer who was running for governor. Kramer wanted to look good. If Kramer raised taxes, he would look bad, and Patterson was already heavy in debt. The city did not have much room to increase the debt. Mayor Kramer, Kramer came up with a scheme to have a new sewer bill. Kramer was brilliant, ruthless, and overambitious. Patterson would get millions in payment if someone bought the Patterson sewers and sent bills. Kramer decided to create a new sewer department to buy Patterson sewers from Patterson on credit. Homeowners then had to pay Patterson a tax bill in addition to the tax bill of twenty dollars quarterly. And mail the bills at different times, but the bills are overdue at the same time. Now, today, this is a system with a separate tax bill of fifty-six dollars per quarter, causing people major problems. Now, speaking because a neighbor is up against having missed payments of four quarters, coming up with terrible expenses. People lose thousands of dollars or even lose their home after they paid Patterson's tax bill and never noticed a separate mailing of a fifty-six-dollar tax bill. Unpaid tax bills cost eighteen percent per month. Now, multiplied by twelve months, it sounds like two hundred sixteen percent interest, but it doesn't actually add up to that much. The best solution for this problem is no longer sending two tax bills, one for, one for fifty-six dollars, but add fifty-six dollars to the main bill. Alternatively, any, any, any procedure whatsoever would help. We could exempt minor unpaid bills. We could certainly mail the two bills the same day at the same time. And remember, Patterson is a corporation like MasterCard. MasterCard sends one bill monthly that says shirt one hundred dollars, pocket handkerchief one dollar, total due a hundred one dollars in thirty days. Patterson mails a bill for three hundred dollars and a bill for one dollar at a different time, and both of them due at the same day. And Patterson's older residents are originally from Russia or China or Italy, they misunderstanding even our bill the way it's written. So New Jersey must adopt a simpler, to understand tax bill to really correct the problem. Many delinquent taxpayers are only confused on when the bills are due. Our mayor can actually look good and actually do good by helping the people end this problem, which costs our people very much money. I'm speaking about a next-door neighbor of mine who is up to his neck in problems because he is a traveling salesman and doesn't open all his mail. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuscaldo. Make sure we pass that information along to the mayor. Thank you.
Mr. President, just real quick, since we're talking about sewer, and I just wanted, through the, through the Chair, Mr. B. A., I did receive many calls from constituents 'cause the sewer bills have come out in the last couple of weeks. I know that the administration is trying to go on to the online payment. I know that the Finance Director did state that the sewer bills will hopefully be up, that we can pay online our taxes, sewer bills by the month of November. I hope that timeline is still on track, and if you could just give us a progress, how that's going. I know I didn't see Marge here, but a lot of people are excited to hear that news, so they're just calling us in line of snow.
Yes, I did meet with the team last week. I think November is doable, but it's pushing it in terms of where we are with the admin system first and then the online payment system second, but we're meeting on a regular basis. We had the folks in from admins last week to talk about what we needed to do in order to push it, so we have a very aggressive timeline. It's on the radar screen, and we're doing everything we can to get the online payment system up and running.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. B. A. Madam Clerk, next speaker.
Yes, Madam President. Next speaker is Commissioner.
Good evening, city council and residents. Just have some things that I wanted to just mention here. We wanted, first thing, those of you who supported our tenth annual New Africa Family Day in Barbers Park, it was wonderful. I didn't get a chance to get around to everyone, so I did wanna come out here tonight and at least give to the clerk a thank you card for the Councilman of the Second Ward, Shaheem Kalik, Councilman of the Third Ward, William Bill McCoy, Councilman of the Sixth Ward, Ala Abdulaziz. We thank them for their contribution, as well as we've seen Councilwoman Ruby Cotton, who always has been very supportive. Councilwoman at Large, Lysa, Dr. Lysa Mims, we, we thank you heartfelt, and our staff, thank you, Alhaka. We all, we just thank you, you know, that without you, we couldn't have been able to do this here. We thank the different organizations, New Family, Good Souls, several other people. There was an article that came out, I think tapping to Patterson, very nice article. It went around the country, you know. I was at the International Muslim Convention in Newark, and people were there from all over the world, and they seen the article and they liked the work. The other thing I wanted to say is that tomorrow at six o'clock, from six to seven thirty, at the Patterson Pre-Public Library, two fifty Broadway, in the basement, we will be having a reorganization of the Fourth Ward CDC. I'm urging residents to come out. I'm hoping that we do not have to call the Attorney General in. We are reorganizing it, and some things have taken, took place before, and we getting to the bottom of a lot of it. So we doing an internal audit of things that have taken place. So that's tomorrow, six to seven thirty. The basement of two fifty Broadway, the main public library. The third thing is that on September the twenty-second, Clean Communities will be at Barbers Park. We thank our Councilwoman Ruby Cotton for, you know, putting that in motion, and we'll have plenty volunteers there. The Occupied Barbers Park Association and Security will be there, and News Twelve, we're reaching out to them and other media outlets because it is a renaissance there. The other thing I wanted to mention is about the police. We want to say that we deeply appreciate the efforts that we see, the cleanup Broadway. We want it cleaned up, and we appreciate the law enforcement, the Patterson Police Department, the Sheriff's Department. They're making their rounds through Barbers Park as well as Broadway. We want it cleaned up. And not only do we want it cleaned up, even some of the people who have been just hanging out there, they say, yeah, this is a mess, this gotta be cleaned up. So they're even acknowledging it. The last thing, Councilwoman President, is I wanted to just ask, is it possible that we can look at getting a speed bump? on Fair Street between Rosa Parks and Carol Street? As you know, there's a school there, the park is there, and there's a church there. And somehow, within that little block there, you know, people just think that's the speed racer area sometime. And, you know, we need, we want that looked into, to possibly get a speed bump there, slow that traffic down. You know, because we do have our volunteers going through there in the morning, making sure that it's clear. Our volunteer, not paid security that goes there, as well as other law enforcement. So, just wanted to say, and last but not least, I want to thank the former Councilman at Large, Kenneth Morris. I want to put that in the record for his contribution. He always gives a very healthy contribution to all of our activities. So, thank you. God bless. Good night. I had to get to my son now.
Good night. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker?
Next speaker is Mr. Freeman.
Good evening, Councilman.
Good evening.
Derek Fitz, Hadi Washington, Mark Williams Jr., and Jaquan Johnson. These are the four students. When I came to this council eight years ago, and I petitioned the City Council to have a child curfew law in the City of Patterson. At that time, I gave all the data. At that time, I said there were over 600 cities, major cities of the United States, that have this kind of law. Since 9/11, and since all the senseless killings that have been going on now for the past eight years, I think this law is definitely needed. We are, our children are now in school session, and I petitioned that no kid 17 and under should be out during school days after 11 o'clock, on weekends after 12 o'clock. Just recently, about three weeks ago, a 17-year-old shot a delivery person from Ming's Kitchen. 17 years old. It was at 12:45 at night. Just last week, I believe, we had a 17-year-old shoot another person in the Third Ward at 3:35 a.m. in the morning. 17 years old. All these young people that I've just said, 17 years and under. We live in a very, very violent time. I hate to say that. I grew up in the Fourth Ward, so I'm pretty used to violence. And it's almost to the point, people accept this kind of violence. This is Patterson, so anything goes. I had pleaded, I had begged, I had prayed that our City Council, now that we have five new members on this council, and there are at least two or three, there's at least two people here who have the information I got. If you want, I will copy all the information that I got eight years ago. I'm sure I can find more. Ladies and gentlemen, the time is now. Our children shouldn't be out. I drive all the time tonight. You know I'm a professional driver. 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock in the morning. I see kids 12, 14, 15, young ladies, young men. And I'm telling you, it's not a good look. I don't know what these parents are doing, but we need to have them accountable. At that time, the Police Department supported what I did. And some City Council people supported me too, in secret. But there was a thing about legality. Let's throw legality to the side because if other cities can do it, and they're legal, Chicago is a mess. And other cities are a mess. We got Passaic, Passaic, Prospect Park, Heldon, they have the curfew. The time is now for Patterson to have that. Second issue I want to talk about. I'm glad Bilal brought up the speeding, and I'll be very brief. For 10 years, I petitioned this council about the speeding. In the Third Ward, from Villanave to Route 20, it's a speed strip, literally a speed strip. I'm not lying. I need to go out there with a speed gun because people are going 35, 40 miles an hour. This is in the Third Ward. I've asked the council, I've asked my councilperson to look into this, have some speed traps. I even did a financial analysis on this. And, Mr. Rivera, I said we could have, make about $1.5 to $2 million off this speeding because the speeding fines have gone up. This is a 25 mile per hour zone. People are going 40 miles an hour. Do the math. Do the math. Last thing, 2,200 traffic tickets this weekend. How many were speeding? How much did, how much did Classic Tow get? And how much money did the Patterson, City of Patterson, receive from those administrative fees? Rivera, I'm looking on you for this because this ticket thing, this Classic Towing thing, is almost to the point, you might have to call the federal government in. It has to stop. And I support the police. But giving tickets because somebody's 20 feet from the corner instead of 25, and I've seen them done it. I've come here before, and they told me about the ticket I got. I drive delivery, and they gave me a ticket anyway. Need to look into this. And I support the police. Definitely, I support the police.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Council President?
Councilman Jackson?
Very quickly. Just want to make, shed a few, just a little bit of light on certain things. I mean, especially for those more experienced constituents that come to the microphone. There's several things that's within the purview of this municipal council. And I just, I hear you urging that you spoke to your councilperson. All of those activities, those actions, are something that you would put on the shoulders of the administration. This council absolutely has no authority to direct the Police Department to write tickets or to put speed bumps in certain areas. You know, it's been advised in the past. Anyway, just a note of reference. I mean, there's a lot of things that the public puts on the shoulders of the councilmembers, and there's things that, you know, are outside of the purview. I know some councilpeople believe that they are the mayor, or they are part of the administration, but the council really has no authority over certain activities. Just want to make that point clear.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Next speaker, Madam Clerk?
God's name, good evening.
Good evening.
First, I just want to ask a brief question, and you can answer it then. But I see on Resolution 16, there is 10 vehicles being purchased. I just want to know if they're for D.W., and you can tell me later. What I'm here for tonight, also, I want to send prayers to the Relais family and all those families that lost loved ones during 9/11. And we are just praying with them and for them. The other thing I want to ask is, you know, some time ago, I know, Councilman Jackson, you were really trying to help some of the seniors over at Freedom Village. And at that time, I was thinking that, you know, maybe it was a little hard because maybe they were trying to do something. But now I find myself in that same pit that those seniors that you were trying to help. Because for so long, I was told that Freedom Village was for seniors according to your income. But now that I got trapped over there, that's not the case. You have to be on some program in order to receive that benefit. And because, whatever reason it was, that I was on the city, on the Housing Authority list, and somehow mysteriously, I'm no longer there, they're saying I'm not eligible to receive those benefits. So, now my rent is going up every single year. And I don't know where Penn Rose or the Housing Authority think I'm getting this money from, to be able to give them every year to live in a one-bedroom apartment that's supposed to be for seniors. And being a retired senior at that. So, I'm asking this council, and I know we put a lot of things on you, but somehow, we gotta do something. We gotta do something. If New York can say to all their seniors, when you are at least, what is this, 50, 65 and older, with less than $50,000 income, your rent should be frozen. Now, when I went to the Patterson Housing Authority, proposed that to them, first they act like they were in favor of it. They said, "Well, go get the information for us, and we'll look into it." So, we went and asked New York how they did it, and bought all of the information back. Then we were told, "Well, the laws would have to be changed in New Jersey to accommodate us with that proposal." So, I'm saying to you, those of you that have those legal minds, and maybe Corporation Council can look into it for us, because we need to do something. I, I, I'm just so angry of the fact that it looks like we don't take care of our seniors and our children. And those are the most vulnerable people that you have in this community. Because once you retire, where am I getting this increase from? Pension sure is not going to do it. Social Security sure isn't doing it. So, where am I supposed to get this money from? But it looks like nobody really gives a you-know-what. And I'm really ready to curse somebody. You know what I'm saying? And I know that's not the proper way to do it, but when people promise you that these things they're looking into, and they're going to help you do this, because when I was going over to Freedom Village, and I went to the director, I said to her, "That's why I wanted to go there." And she said, "Well, Wahita, once you get there, then we can do something." So, I guess she didn't think I was going to get in there. Maybe that's what it was. Because now that I'm there, it's like, you know, I'm talking to a brick wall. So, I don't know what to do. I really don't. So, I'm here to ask for whatever help anybody can give me other than giving me a room in your basement. Because this is crazy. I had a senior to tell me one time, you know what, Wahita? "I'm just going to rent out my bathroom." Because this is crazy. We can't afford to do anything but buy a medicine and buy some food. It's crazy. So, I'll wait for your response, even though you might not have any, but...
Before, I know, Councilman Jackson, you want to speak, and so does Councilwoman Cotton. I just want to state, because I know that I've been to various meetings at Freedom Village with Councilwoman Cotton. Going to say, probably almost two years ago, we started going to those meetings. And one of the questions that I asked specifically to the director was about the housing, and how was it? And the apartments, she said, were, a portion were market value, a portion was Section 8, and a portion was, it was like, almost like a 33%. And so, what I'm hearing you say is that that's not necessarily true?
Well, you have to be on that lottery list to get one of those programs.
Okay.
So, and then the girl said to me, "Out of the 73 apartments in there, only 21 goes to housing." How the hell is that equal? If they're equal partners, how is it that I only get 21 apartments to afford people to live, what, three? Huh?
Right.
Right.
Which is, okay, count, yeah. Okay, Councilwoman Cotton, Councilman Jackson.
You know, thank you, Ms. Wahita. When those buildings were being planned, I disagreed completely of putting three components in a senior building. And the three components are Section 8. If you're coming from somewhere else, and you have a Section 8 voucher, you bring it with you. The other component is, if you're already in senior housing, you could move out of one senior housing into that. The other component is private, market rent. And I said, "How do you put three components in a building that the apartment next to you is paying 200, and I'm paying 1,000?"
Mine, yes.
And so, I said, "To me, it's not a great idea how it could be changed." And you just mentioned something that I didn't know about, about the state of New Jersey. So, I have to find out from Assemblymen Wimbley and something because I have no clue of what that part is. But to me, it was just not right, and I disagreed. The buildings are beautiful, but to put the three components in there, it should not have been. And it's so unfair. And I have constantly asked our congressmen, you know, that we do need more funds coming into the city for senior housing. Right now, our senior housing do not have any vacancies. Senior housing do not have any vacancies. The only time they become vacant, and you know, Ms. Wahita, when someone passed. They do not move out. They do not, they stay there. And we basically do not have enough senior housing. So, hopefully, some of the information, I heard what you said today, that I can talk, maybe I'm going to talk to the congressman, and then talk to my two Assembly people and my state senator on how we can get something changed. So, I'm going to ask them for an answer. Is there some laws that need to be changed? And we would try our best to do that, so. But you very rarely get buildings built like Freedom Village. You never put those three components in there together like that. So, I would just, it's just insane to put that in there like that. Thank you, Ms. Wahita. Thank you, Council President.
I'll be very brief, Ms. Muhammad. I appreciate, you know, you always being the voice for those who can't, who are voiceless. And obviously, you already know, I'll be the consistent advocate. That's my, that's my job. It was unfortunate, there was a woman who was barred to wheelchair, and she was on the verge of being evicted. And that's what we were over there fighting for. I know that's Councilwoman Cotton's ward, but whenever there's a person that needs some assistance, I try to do my best. Now, what I'm happy about is, this does fall into the purview of the council. And this council does have an opportunity to evaluate the situation. I've been making noise about it for quite some time. And, you know, it's sad how our people are being treated. These are non-taxable properties. So, you have developers that's coming in and not paying taxes. They're receiving a full benefit. Who cares, you're paying $200? That's not what they're getting for the apartment. They're getting full market rate. In fact, most of them are getting 110% because the vouchers that are being supplied by housing are paying at 110%. So, here the city is, we're taking a beat, and we're not getting taxation. We're giving away property that's of high value, and then they turn around and treat our people, you know, very poorly. The other side of that is, we're losing jobs to these third-party companies that are now running and managing these facilities. I believe personally, housing has done a horrible job through the past 25, 30 years with maintenanceing and keeping up on these properties. When you go to all of the sites, there's poor landscaping. Seniors should be living in an environment that's pleasant, living out the rest of their lives in a pleasant environment. You guys have put a lot forward to help build this community. We should be paying that forward. We don't. You know, you have various senior homes that have poor maintenance of the facilities, interior, exterior. So, I mean, I'm with you 100%. Please, give me all the information about what it is that you're dealing with. I'm hoping that, you know, my colleagues hear this loud and clear, as well as members of the administration. We can't allow for our people to be taken advantage of this way. There's premium dollars being made off of these facilities. We appreciate the opportunity for developers to come in and help us with certain things. But to be recipients of top dollar on the return of their investment without any commitment back to the community is not, is not fair. So, I'm with you 100%. I don't, I don't understand how you fell into this gap, but I'm willing to assist.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson.
Councilman, I just need to correct you. Freedom Village is paying taxes. They're not tax-free sitting there.
Freedom Village has a 99-year tax...
No, not 99, no.
Councilwoman Cotton and Councilman Jackson.
They're paying, I'm finding out for sure, Ms...
And I can explain. Councilman Jackson, please, one moment.
About what HUD did on the federal level to all throughout this United States. What HUD did to all housing authorities, not just in Patterson, but throughout the whole United States. They did a really bad job on some of this stuff. And they think that they don't see what's getting ready to happen from HUD now? It's coming back. It's coming now. Thank you, Council President.
HUD just issued a number of hundreds of vouchers to all the facilities. In fact, the proposal that we have on the table for Fifth Avenue...
They might have vouchers, but they don't have...
There's over 270-plus vouchers.
Councilwoman Cotton and Councilman Jackson, I'm going to ask for a moment, please, because you're going to go back and forth and...
I don't understand why Councilwoman Cotton, when I sat and let her say what she had to say...
Correct. And that's why I, that's why I called on Councilwoman Cotton because you had the floor.
Go ahead. Thank you, Ms. Wahita. Thank you, Council President.
Ms. Wahita, Muhammad, thank you for coming today. Councilman McCoy had a suggestion, all right? And I think that we should call Mr. BA, Director Gorman, to a workshop, and we're going to have some conversations, okay? I'm going to have Councilwoman Memm, Councilman Rivera, and then we're going to have your final comment. Councilman McCoy, Councilwoman Memm.
Thank you, Madam President. I think that's a great idea. Thank you for coming, Ms. Wahita. This has been the... This has been the concern all throughout the community. As you talk to our seniors, as you see them in their scooters and their wheelchairs, and you see them even in their buildings, and people call us consistently looking for housing, and the response is, there is nothing. So I think it's great that we will call Ms. Gorman here to do a presentation. But what I would like to see in that presentation, um, is the data on how many housing complexes that we have or availability that we have, whether there is or there isn't. I would like to see how many, um, locations and where they're located throughout the city, um, and then what is the plan to move forward to ensure that we can create or, um, shift some things around to ensure that our seniors, um, have somewhere to live. It's really sad, because our seniors are the legacy holders of our community, and we have to ensure that we don't lose our legacy by not allowing our seniors to have a place to live, or become the homeless, or become, um, the vagrants that we see outside. And some of the people that we see outside, or the homeless, they're not all people from outside of Patterson. They are people that were working, lost their job, families, situations happen, and then they're now, those people that you see on the steps of the library or laying under trees and different things. And so, um, I think this was a great dialogue. Thank you for coming to bring it up. Um, and whatever we need to do, I am like one thousand percent behind it, because we have to make sure that we do not forget our seniors in the city of Patterson.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mims. Councilwoman Rivera?
I mentioned this, uh, yesterday at the, at the meeting that we had here. Um, we, we as a council created these authorities sometime, you know, so many years ago. And the purpose is to, that they're supposed to serve is to benefit the people, right? From time to time, although they have their own board, from time to time, we need to have dialogue with them. I just don't see that going on. Um, a, another authority that we have, um, is the Parking Authority, right? When it was set up, it was supposed to serve a purpose. That authority has over probably seventy-something million worth of assessed, you know, property value, that if they were on the tax rolls, um, we would see more tax generated and less of a burden on the taxpayers. But we continue to go about our business like things are going to change without actually trust, uh, making drastic moves. You see other municipalities throughout the state making those tough decisions that nobody wants to make. So you know what? We, it, it is our job here as the council to bring them to the table and have a talk with them, to see how is it that our residents are benefiting from these organizations? And have a serious talk. If the purpose that they were, the, the benefit that the residents were seeing back then are no longer seen now, then we should consider, uh, you know, and again, I'm going to take a lot of, a lot of heat for this, but I didn't get here just to make friends. Uh, I, I got here to make tough decisions that benefit the people. Um, either you provide the, uh, improve the services that you're providing to the residents, or we're going to have to make drastic moves here. And you know what I mean by drastic moves.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rivera. Councilwoman McCoy.
I'm going to have to spell out the drastic moves in a memo. Sister Wahita, welcome.
What'd you say, Councilwoman?
And I know you did ask the one question that, that so far, we haven't answered. So I'm going to answer it first. Uh, unfortunately, um, the ten new vehicles are not for DPW.
Really?
No, they're not. But they are for, um, they are for our, um, our Fire Department. And some of those vehicles that are currently being used will be reallocated, uh, redistributed to departments within the city, including DPW. But because of your, um, your conversation, the conversation that's been ongoing, we are now having, uh, DPW in sight. We are discussing a lease-purchase agreement similar to what the Fire Department used and the police to secure proper equipment for, for our DPW. We recognize that not only are they on-demand, they're under-equipped, and it's critically important if we are to get the best function out of the department, that we provide them with some additional equipment. When we look at our parks and the liability from dead trees and dead branches and other things that exist, um, we know that, um, they need some additional equipment. I'm glad to see that the director is here. I'm not too sure if everybody knows him, recognize him, uh, Mr. Rodriguez. They call him, uh, he's William as well. That means he has a lion heart. And they call him Billy Rodriguez. He's very effective on his stand director. Uh, he's wearing the, um, the Ken Morris look tonight. Um, and hopefully, he can, he is as effective. So, um, we, we do have that in mind, and we will, we'll be working on that, all right? So come into a town and community near you soon. And, um, thank you for, um, defending our, our seniors and bringing that issue to bear. It is a little bit confusing. Um, there is a level of, um, uh, concern as to how we are addressing the housing need, uh, particularly as we're going through a transition. As you know, the old Alabama went through that change. Um, Fifth Avenue is currently going through that. And, um, there are a lot of questions and concerns among the population that live there, as well as the broader community. How is that going to unfold? And how well is that? I think the Freedom Village is one of those spots that were created brand-new from a redeveloped site. And, um, I, I do want to, to caution or raise the issue that, um, it's, it's a, um...
Don't say autonomous body.
It's an approach, it's an approach to co-mingle or to make sure that you don't have just a, uh, homogeneous group in one place, where you put a diverse group of people together, that varying income, um, social background, and all of that, to make a community. Um, and I think it's a social experiment that I think can work and does work. Um, what we need to do at the same time is to make sure that there's equity and fairness and, um, and that folks are treated well.
Yeah.
Uh, when I, when I talk to the folks that are there, I mean, the financial burden or the raising of rent is one concern, but the, the conversation, the ability to be respected and to be treated as a, as a human being and to be valued, I think is clearly a, a concern. And we want to make sure that our management team and those that collaborate and work with us understand that our, our community ought to be respected. And just because I'm on a fixed income doesn't mean that my, my, my level of respect should be fixed as well. Just because I'm not, I'm paying a small contribution towards all of that doesn't mean that I don't have a certain level of dignity that should be afforded to me. Um, and as the councilman rightfully says, the developer is getting full value for that unit, albeit subsidized, whichever way it is, they're getting full value. So we need, we intend to ensure that you're getting full value. And I think the director, um, has that vision. It would be my hope and that the, the board, um, made up of Patterson folks have that vision. And I think what we are saying is, let's have the conversation. Um, let's begin to die, dig into, um, the arrangements that exist, how they work, and make sure that we have a full understanding that our people can transition through and get the respect that they need. It, it's important to look at the name of that facility. Just underscore the name and what that represent. Freedom Village. What it represent, our years of, uh, experience, and now we're in, um, freedom. It, it should be a place that affords everyone, uh, the dignity that a human being deserve. And, um, there should be no surprises. Um, folks should know what the arrangement is, and it should be such that, um, um, it becomes affordable and pleasant for them to be there. So I'm looking forward to the conversation. I don't think it has to be adversarial. I think, um, we're asking the director and her team to come and to explain to us, the council and the public, what the arrangements are. And, and there should be, um, a, um, we know the councilman is an advocate, uh, on this side, but there should be a resident advocacy group, a resident, um, complaint center or a resident manager that can address these concerns, uh, to the, to the residents. I know you have a family room, a meeting room. You have all of the facilities there to make, um, for a very, um, healthy environment. And I think, um, we should, we should demand no less, and, and I'm looking forward to having that conversation. So once again, thank you for coming and for sharing. Too often, we go without complaining. And I'm becoming of the opinion that, um, we need to complain a little more, so that folk know what the problem is, and more importantly, that we can work towards a solution. Uh, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman McCoy.
Can I just say two quick things? I'm a person that believes if you suffer in silence, you suffer alone. The other thing is, talking about respect, you know, Councilwoman, that we take food to Freedom Village. It was every Thursday, but now the food bank cut it back to two Thursdays. It's the first and second Thursday of the month. Last Thursday, we used their trolley to bring the food in, because the man that used to help us out putting the stuff back had a heart attack. So the trolley was left out. The manager called me later and said to me, "Because you all left it out, you're not going to be able to use it anymore." Can you believe that? I was so, I'm telling you.
That's our people.
Isn't it, isn't it, to say that we can't use the trolley to bring the food into the people, into the building, because we left it out? Isn't that crazy?
We are going to be addressing all of that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you for coming.
And if you run across a room, let me know, so I can move.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker?
Yes, Madam President. I would like to, we have a doctor having, uh, a senior...
Okay, he's not here. Motion.
Seeing no other members of the public at the podium, motion that the public portion be closed?
Second.
Move to close the public portion by Councilwoman McCoy, and second by Councilwoman Colicke, and Councilwoman Rivera roll call to close the public portion.
Yes, Madam President. Roll call to close the public portion. Councilman Abbott, please?
Yes.
Councilwoman Abbott, yes, Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you very much. Councilmembers, this time, we will continue with the agenda. Uh, we will now go to the non-consent agenda. Uh, a lot of these matters have been discussed, uh, so, uh, I do have, um, to my finance chair, I do have, I was looking at, um, item number forty-three as an item that I had some questions about, and I think I'd like to take that one first, if you don't mind? Yes, I'd like to do that. Uh, item number forty-three, Madam Clerk, please, uh, read it into the record.
Next item on the, 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 item number forty-three, item number forty-three, release regulations authorizing contract extensions for outside legal comments, too, October third, first twenty-eighteen, and authorizing new requests for code that law will use in eighteen, contract...
Do I have a motion?
Moving.
Second for...
Discussion? Okay, move by Councilwoman McCoy, second by Councilwoman Colicke. I'd like a discussion. So...
Madam President?
Councilwoman Adelaziz.
Through the Chair to Corporation Council, these legal contracts are extensions from last year?
Uh, that is correct. Uh, these are extensions, uh, the contracts initially ended on June thirtieth of twenty-eighteen, um, but for the obvious sort of practical reasons, uh, the contracts were never renewed or the RFPs of, never came before the council. So we need by law to go out for RFP. We are not allowed to just let people carry over. You have to, by professional service, um, by local public contracts law, go out for an RFP for professional service of this magnitude, of this nature. Um, so that is what we're doing, but we obviously can't be without legal representation. So this resolution serves two purposes. One, to ask the council to allow us to extend, um, through October for the current attorneys, but to also allow that we go out, um, for requests for proposals as required by law to solicit for new attorneys and/or some of the same ones, but essentially to ask attorneys to, um, provide us with packets so that we can make determinations for the attorneys to represent the city on outside matters.
So we haven't gone for RFPs yet?
Uh, no, we have not.
Madam President?
Thank you.
Councilwoman, uh, Adelaziz, are you done?
Yeah, I'm done for now.
Okay, Councilwoman Rivera, then Councilwoman Cotton.
So I just need a legal opinion, because, uh, we have read many things on the newspaper recently regarding a contract to, uh, you know, uh, Board of Education...
Okay.
...which, uh, brings, uh, our BA into, into question. And I noticed that one of the firms here, I just want a legal opinion before we vote on this. One of the firms here, um, they were doing business here before the BA came on board.
That's correct.
Um, but we are extending it. And one of the questions that I have is, do all these firms are currently, uh, uh, do they have a case right now? We're just extending the contract in, in, in case we're going to use them for litigation?
If you are referring to a specific firm, I just want to be clear about your question.
Okay, so the firm that, that is basically associated, or that they, uh, basically stated in the newspaper that Mr. McCoy is associated with, which is the Inglisino Webster, I don't know the last name, we, we see, Mrs. Cala Taylor Elsie, uh, do they currently have a co, do they currently have a case with us?
Uh, yes, they do. I believe they've been representing the city for, I believe, well over ten years. Um, so they do currently have, uh, a fair amount of matters for, uh, that they are handling for the city.
So we're going to go out for an RFP?
Correct.
Are they going to be considered for future contracts?
Will they be considered for future contracts? Um, I believe y, your, your question is related to the conflicts of interest, potential conflicts of interest issue. Um, respectfully, these are matters that your questions are very valid, but I do think that depending on other bidders, they may subject us to potential litigation from bidders who may try to raise that issue. So it's one that I would prefer to discuss in executive session if it is, you know, imperative to you to understand. But to your point, we are well aware of the issue. We are researching those specific issues, and we will do what is best to protect all parties involved in, uh, addressing the awarding of contracts.
So, so one moment.
Madam President.
Councilwoman Rivera, I'm sorry, are you, are you done?
No.
Because I have a question.
We might come back later, but go ahead.
Okay. So are you saying that there is no conflict?
I am saying that conflicts of interest, to be quite candid, are really handled on a case-by-case basis. There is no bright-line rule about conflicts unless it's things like, you cannot take money and say, "Give me five dollars and I'll give you this." So short of those bright-line rules, the rest are all case-by-case, depending on the circumstances, and can be argued in both the affirmative and the negative. What I can tell you is that, based on as it stands now, these individuals report directly to my office. They do not in any way report to the business administrator. These matters are handled directly through me and my office, not in consultation with the business administrator, only perhaps to the extent of settlement value, finances, if we have money, um, to, to settle cases. And I think what makes this also a very different circumstance is that these specific individuals had this contract long before, uh, the business administrator took office. So the arguments that one would make to discuss a conflict is whether or not it appears that, um, there was some impropriety, you, some undue influence, and based on the, just the sheer amount of time that they've had the contract, I think speaks to the fact that that's not the case here. Um, so again, we are all looking into, uh, making a determination that will be legally appropriate and one that we can stand behind in the issuance of a new contract. But I think it would be unfair to outright state that they would be precluded from that, because I believe that there are significant arguments... because I believe that there are significant arguments to suggest that they would not be precluded from a contract with the city in light of the relationship that they have. I would go on record as saying, the only objection that I could say to me would be a bright-line rule is if they are representing the school board, they can't represent the city in any actions that are adverse to the city. And on behalf of the school board or vice versa. But I think in your holistic question, I'm not prepared at this point to say that there's an outright ban.
Madam President?
Thank you. Hold on. Okay, Councilwoman Mims?
Yes. So, just a question. Based on what you just stated, determining the contract is from July first to October thirty-first. So, what happens if we choose to table this tonight until we get like definitive... A definitive answer as to, will this put us in a gray area?
Well, what I would say to you is, this specific resolution isn't an awarding of a contract. So, in fact, tabling it leaves the very people that they are concerned about in the same positions longer. So, this contract actually only allows that the city isn't left in a lurch while we are soliciting new requests. If you table it, we will not be able to go out for those new requests. And in essence, the same people will be representing us. Or even to the extent we make a determination that, you know what, it's a conflict. It might be in the best interest to just preclude them. If that was the decision, all we would be doing is taking away their contract and their cases. But that would not... That would not cure the issue that we have before us, which is that none of these attorneys can continue to work without a contract for the amount of time that it would be if this was tabled. So, that's, of course, well within your prerogative. But I do feel that the tabling of this matter doesn't... It really has no force or effect on the issue that was raised by the councilman. I think that that issue, in all due respect, becomes more pertinent when I am asking that contracts be awarded. And if the council at that time feels strongly, then you can make that determination. But I think that is the issue that is imperative when I am asking to award contracts to different vendors.
Okay.
Madam President?
Thank you. Councilman Abdelaziz, Councilman Rivera.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to ask the... Thank you, Corporation Counsel. I got a couple of questions for the BA. Mr. BA, do you have any affiliation with this? Are you currently working for them at this law firm?
Just say you want to discuss that on executive session.
I believe these questions, again, I think we've discussed enough to have... Make sure that the conversation has context. But I think some of these discussions, again, lead us down a path that other attorneys can come and make accusations. That's why there was a newspaper article. People can make different accusations in these types of issues, although they're not often heard about because they're not costing people a bunch of money. Vendors have a right to bring lawsuits to say, "We were unfairly not selected." And I don't want to lay out things that... In all candor, I would stand behind a belief that I don't... I think one can argue with a very straight face that there is no conflict. But with that being said, I recognize that sometimes you have to make decisions that just are about how things appear. So, I recognize that. But I don't want to set a record that puts us in a place that vendors who aren't selected, that may... They may not be selected for no reason that has anything to do with this, and now saying that they're not selected because of an alleged relationship between a part of our administration and a vendor who's been here for ten years before he was at all involved.
Because we... No, I just want to reiterate on something like this. We understand that this vendor's been here multiple years. But also, from a council, or my point of view, we have to do what's best for our city. We need to make sure that our employees are making the best decisions based on what's the best for the Patterson taxpayers and Patterson residents. And that comes... And when it comes to legal, that has a big, big, big deal. You know, if there's a settlement option, is the settlement option best for the city of Patterson or is it best for this law firm? Is the settlement option... Don't settle because this law firm could get more hours and it gets more money? These are questions that we have to make sure. If we want to take this executive session, we could discuss this when the RFPs come in. I think right now, we need to continue with this. And I think when we get into executive session, the BA could let us know. But in the end, we also have to make sure that all our employees are making the best decisions for our residents and our taxpayers.
I understand that. And one thing I'd like to say, and I will say it here on the record, there is no person here that would tell me or direct me to do something that I did not think was in the best interest of the city. So, I have been given, and I don't think that's been disputed, complete authority about matters that I think we should settle, subject only to your approval. And that is the only way that I would operate. So, I understand your concern. And your concern is actually one that is very valid. So, I don't want to minimize it. But what I can say is that that is not a concern that you need to have with the way I intend to operate the Law Department in the handling of matters.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilman Rivera, and we'll finalize with comments from Councilman McCoy.
I'm not questioning the integrity of the business administrator of yours by any means. But, you know, in this line of business, it's this public perception.
I agree.
You know, we have to fill out financial disclosure statements when we take office. I'm sure you, as the position that you hold, you have to do the same. And it just sends the wrong message. I'm not saying... Just picture this in your mind. Flavio Rivera opens up a business. Or my brother has a business that I have an interest in, right? Or that I get some type of benefit from that business. Now, for whatever reason, now my brother start, you know, getting city contracts out of it. It doesn't look very good publicly. So, that's why I raised the question, to ask for a legal opinion. You check with the state and get an opinion from them. And my other concern is, this resolution just don't extend the contract. We're also giving you authorization to go ask for proposals.
Correct.
I want this to be resolved before you go to proposals. I want the administration to make a determination. And again, we got to be careful of the words that we choose here. But it's just not a good look. I think personally, it's just not a good look as a city to... It's unfair. I would say it's unfair to the firm. But it's just not a good look because of the situation that we're in. That's my only concern.
And to be very candid, Councilman Rivera, your perception about things has... Is well noted. And all parties involved have discussed it and are all interested in ensuring that we comply with all local government ethics rule. However, and again, I don't want to minimize your idea that it doesn't look good. But the legal standard is no longer what... It's the appearance of impropriety. Which, based on that standard, we would be in a different situation. That is no longer the standard. But again, I would ask if the council would seriously consider allowing me to solicit RFPs, because that is all it is. It is basically an advertisement saying, "If you'd like to work for us, please provide your bios and show us why we should select you." Even if this firm were to submit and we determine you cannot do work for us, then they're just not selected. So, the need to stall this doesn't... It's really of no moment. It's not required. If the determination is made, they can. And I bring them before you, guess what? You have the authority to say, "No, we won't select them" if you feel that way about it, irrespective of my legal opinion. Or if I determine there are other better, more qualified firms, they may not be selected. There's no guarantee that they will be selected. So, this resolution only allows for me to get people to say, "We have interest in representing you." And it is really required because we will be out of compliance with law by allowing this to go on, you know, another two or three months. And that's my concern.
Okay.
Can I have... I'm sorry. Can I... Could you allow me to speak again, Council President?
Councilman Rivera.
Yes. See, we're extending a contract for a few... Three months. How come... How come we didn't specify which case they're on right now?
Because they're on numerous cases. They've had prior to either of us attending the first meeting. They were one of the firms who handled a fair amount of cases. So, really, to do what is most fiscally responsible for the city, to take thirty or forty cases that are in federal court that are almost on for trial and give them to another firm to bill us to start from the beginning would impact our budget in a way that, you know, I'm sure you can't imagine. So, that is really why I'm trying to move with haste so that we can get people situated.
So, let me get this straight. And I don't want to prolong this. But I just need to get an understanding. So, after we do this extension, we're going to do an RFP, which you guys are going to qualify...
Correct.
This law firms. And you're going to make the... Not these ones. Whichever, you know, come in.
Yes.
And you're going to, you know, recommend the firms that you guys believe are better, you know, conserve the city better.
Correct.
Or best.
Yes.
But then after that, right there, they don't have a contract yet. They just have... We just approve a pool of lawyers or law firms to serve us. When we go out and actually give them work, do they come before the council for us to award a contract not to exceed?
Different places do it differently. So, what I understand of your past practice, because, you know, I obviously have other experience and the practice was different. For litigation matters, as I've seen from prior resolutions, at the time that the prior Corporation Counsel would come to you, they would say, "Please approve the contract of firm X, Y, and Z not to exceed X amount of dollars."
Correct.
That was the way it was done. There are also circumstances where it can be done, where you could say, "This is the list of firms that you are authorizing me to choose from with the understanding that the total contract for outside services will not surpass X amount of dollars."
No. Well, as a Finance Chair, I have a recommendation, right? Where I work, we actually... Every time there's a case, every time we award a contract...
Council President?
Yes.
Just a point of order, Councilman. I think, if I may, Council President.
Councilman McCoy.
I think we would be well advised to heed the caution of Corporation Counsel. All things are lawful. Not all things are expedient. And when we are sitting at this dais, the things that we say are being placed into the public record. And even though we have a right to say it, it may not be in the city's best interest for us to say it at the dais. And I think also, we should cross the bridge that is before us and not the one that is down the road. Right now, the request for us is to consider the extension of contracts with existing vendors for these services, which have been let way before this administration take into effect. So, this administration had no impact on the selection or the contracting for these items. We simply extended the contract so as to allow us now to go out and get an RFP for additional vendors or vendors to provide services going forward. I think we should take that at the point that it is. The issues that we are raising are not associated with this action but are well important for future action. And I think the Corporation Counsel has recognized that and will address those concerns going forward. So, I would just encourage and caution us as we proceed to act on the matter before us, having cautioned and given advice to the Corporation Counsel that those matters will be addressed in the future. And not to create potential concerns for our interests, the city's interests, by way of our inquiry prematurely, if I may. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you, Councilman McCoy.
I agree. I agree with Councilman McCoy. We could leave that for the Finance Committee discussion on how we could do things forward, see if the council agrees with me. But my concern here still is the RFP that we're putting out. And I just want to put that on the record. I want to make sure that we get some clarification to see if there's any conflict. Like I stated before, I'm just being... I'm just repeating myself, just to drive the point. This resolution serving two purposes. An extension and authorizing you to go for an RFP. And I just don't feel too comfortable as a council member. Again, we could leave that for...
Okay.
We could leave that for executive session.
Thank you, Councilman Rivera. Councilman Jackson?
Very good. I apologize, but I feel very compelled to make this point and understanding Councilman Rivera's concerns and respecting it greatly. As our former mayor departed, I made a reference to make it clear to the public and to the newspaper community on the necessity to protect the integrity of those who serve, especially those who have proven and have longstanding track records. And I have to say this, and this may be related or may not be, but I want to commend our Corporation Counsel. The more I work with you, the more I appreciate you. You give clear, concise, legal advice without emotion. You always make it clear for what the position is, and I respect that greatly. But I also want to just put on record that, you know, we have two decorated and respectable, outstanding Patersonians who represent us. It does not negate Councilman Rivera's concern. But I think that, you know, as we mill forward and do certain things, that their past practices and current integrity would allow them to make the decisions that are in the best... Within the best consideration for the public as well as their positions they hold. I think that by us doing certain things and having certain dialogue in the public's eye on TV, sometimes it gives the perception, and a lot of our community members don't always understand the full impact or full detailed information or, you know, understand the legality of certain things. So, sometimes it could be misconstrued. So, I would like for all of us to move with caution whenever we're, you know, especially for those community members who have been proven, who have longstanding track records and who have, you know, dedicated themselves to make sure that we all... The same dedication that we all are making. And I would definitely protect the integrity of each and every one of the council members that stand here, sit here as well, as well as some of the community members that come to the microphone. You know, we have to be careful on the rocks that we throw or just sometimes put references out there. People take those things and take it the wrong way. And they'll be out there with their megaphones, adding the... Adding some rhetoric to it that was not intended to begin with. So, just wanted to make... Put that on record, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Thank you, Councilwoman Kine.
Thank you, Council President. I just would like to say, I thought that we need to go out to... We need to extend because there's cases out there. And I want to say to my colleagues, we haven't been in executive session yet. And it's coming. And I know they're coming. So, we got these cases that we're not sure about yet. But what I would like to see our Corporation Counsel is to maybe look how the past practice has been and to maybe change it a little, to let us know ahead of time some of the things that are going to come before us. And I... That would clearly help us. I can see that. So... Okay, yeah. But we know that... And I'm going to agree with my Councilman Jackson here. You're right to the point, Corporation Counsel. And I love you for that. That you give the right answer and you're not beating around the bush. So... So, but we just have to extend this and then go up for RFP, and it's up to us council members to vote.
Right. We're getting ready to vote.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cahn. Councilman Colick?
Madam Corporate Counsel, last workshop, I requested for the list of the attorneys, in-house attorneys.
Yes, you did.
And duties, it's been a week.
Yes, you did. I apologize. No, I have not, I have not provided that to you. You will have it in your email this evening. I am sorry.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, council members, we are now, Madam Clerk, roll call on item number forty-three.
Item number forty-three, I am recommending the item number forty-three for extension, outside legal contract through October thirty-first, twenty-eighteen, and authorizing new request for proposed at number forty-four, for the motion to destroy by Councilman Cahn's second request, for item number forty-three for approval, Councilman Abbele.
Yeah, before I vote, it was great dialogue that our council had. Sometimes I think this dialogue is good to make sure the decisions that we make are transparent, and make sure that there is no, any concerns that the residents may see. And I look forward to having discussion in executive session, because in the end, we have to do what's best for our residents, and my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cahn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes, yes.
Councilwoman Cahn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahn?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abbele?
No.
Madam President?
Yes.
The voting is seventy-two, one against, one absent, item number forty-three here right now.
Okay. Corporation Counsel?
Yes.
Are we able to take forty and forty-one together, since they're both, I'm sorry, hold on a minute, I'm sorry, no, 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 forty-one and forty-two?
Yes, you can.
Okay, council members, Madam Clerk, I'd like you to read items number forty-one and forty-two together.
Next, item on the agenda is item number forty-one and forty-two. Item number forty-one, please, resolution in respect of the new, that's for a license for Panchita's Pizza, L S D, and forty-six dash forty-eight orchestration in the first board, finance resolution, eighteen, five, one, two. And item number forty-two, please, resolution in respect of the new entertainment slash show item for Panchita's Pizza, L S D, and forty-six dash forty-eight orchestration in the first board, finance resolution, eighteen, five, one, three.
Second.
Go ahead. Move by Councilman Jackson, second by Councilwoman Mims. Roll call on item forty-one and forty-two on the non-consent agenda.
What was the item forty-one and forty-two approval, Councilman Abbele?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Abbele?
Yes.
Councilwoman Abbele?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
So he's getting paid for one action, item forty-one and forty-two, he's a record.
Okay. Item, let's take item number thirty-seven. Madam Clerk, before you read into the record, item thirty-seven, which is the resolution to suspend the taxi cab registrations for Colazo Logistics Care Transportation Service, I need some clarification, which I did ask Corporation Counsel, I saw an email council members, I don't know if you all saw the email, that indicated that there was a issuance of, they have twelve cars, and only one insurance, one car insured. Can you please elaborate and give us the full explanation of what was presented to your office?
Okay, he did. He went back and he, the, he, so he was able to have that seal, so he did get a communication from CI that he paid, he gave two money for this, one for the president, and one for the check, and he just wanted to check. And then he received, sorry, because by the insurance, he had a fleet of credit cards, and at this point, just one card that he insured. So, I was gonna have a question.
Okay, so...
Counsel President?
Councilman Jackson?
Madam Clerk, do you have a list or a report based on, the taxi cab enforcement agent reports directly to you, correct?
I work alongside.
Work alongside. So, at the time of renewal, which at this point, you do get a full report from the, from...
It's not a renewal, the renewal takes place next year, sometime between March and April.
But is there a report from Taxi Cab Enforcement for this company? Well, I understand the insurance issue, that's a whole nother issue, but...
Yes, but sometime they do change their insurance, and sometime they do replace it from the year. So, as we go along, there's some changes with some companies, they do change their insurance.
Well, I'm not referring to the insurance at the right now. I'm talking about the, there's a, we have a Taxi Cab Enforcement Officer, correct? And if there's any violations, whatever they would be, I don't know what those, what the restrictions or policies of that office is, but are there any, as when we do renewals or evaluations of ABC licenses, there's an ABC Commission that comes forward, and they present a case file, or if there are any infractions. Does the company have any violations or infractions?
Not yet. But the taxi company, the agents do go over the check, the location of the taxi company, but I, I...
So one of the things that I'm concerned about, and I'm not sure, how council colleagues, how you feel about this, but through the chair, I mean, with the Corporation Counsel, it was my understanding that this applicant had presented a check that was invalid, so a check in non, without good faith. And is, you know, from my understanding, that is actually a violation of the law, is that not?
Again, assuming these things were done intentionally, then there may be potential criminal sanctions that may be warranted. But those are things that, you know, and I'm not certain to the extent that that's occurred, I'm not, I don't know if that was, you know, forwarded on appropriately. But I think to the question of whether or not, what to do with today's resolution, I would just caution the council that this specific individual has eleven, twelve, twelve cabs, one has insurance, and obviously by allowing this person to continue to operate, although you can do it with the one car, you are now taking into account that we are also potentially taking responsibility for these other eleven cars, who's going to monitor them? How do we confirm whether they're being operated, and if they are operated, there may be some difficulties in being able to argue successfully that we were under the belief that only one car was operated. So I just would caution the council that while it is in your discretion, based on the information provided, that this resolution does not have to be passed, I would recommend that the council look at this specific incident and all the facts involved. I'm not sure if this individual has been before the council before with similar circumstances, but I think all of those factors should be weighed in making a determination on tonight's resolution.
And that's the reason for me asking the question. So before you speak, Councilwoman Mims, Madam Clerk, did the individual, did the applicant bring it to your attention that he only had one vehicle insured, or did you have to do due diligence to find that fact?
No, it's, they tried to be doing this for me a couple months, but he did for the specific, the liability insurance to the terrorist office, which he has to do. Actually, he was shut down by any actual threat, he's on the mission. So, he provided the information, and the other information was sent from the community department, so he actually, and he did pay fees.
But the question I'm asking you is, when he supplied, does that certificate of insurance say?
He was saying, he was saying, you'll become in, and then he said, for insurance.
But does that certificate of insurance say it covers one?
One car, and the effective date is September seventeenth, this year, and expires next year, September for one car, he covers one car.
Understood, Councilwoman.
He has a seal for that application, September seventeenth, have a seal for that application.
So just based on the information that was presented, workshop, and then up to date with all the new information, I would really like to see checks and balances in place as it relates to incidents such as this one, in particular, what you're standing with motor vehicle. That's something that we need to do from the administration side, when we have taxi cab companies that are operating through our city, we need to see what their record is year by year, whether it's, I mean, if we have incidents such as this one, maybe every six months. I'm not sure how that would look, but I think we need to put some parameters in place to be able to ensure the safety of anyone that rides in any type of bus service, whether it's taxi cab, whether it's the small buses or whatever, but especially when it affects the residents of this community, when it's brought before us with situations that we have before us on tonight. And I think that's, safety is a priority for our residents, and I would definitely like to see a check and balance in place from our Taxi Cab Inspection Department, to make sure that we're doing motor vehicle checks, whether it's a year, six months, I'm not sure, but I would love to have that in place so that we can look at the driving record of those individuals that are driving, whether their license are suspended, whether it's good, whether it's revoked, whatever, but we need to see that on a frequent basis.
Mister President, I'm, Councilman Lee, he's, he's not able to operate this taxi on the terrorist office, providing...
No, I know for him, but I'm just saying, I know his situation because he has to wait until tonight, but I'm saying just in general, for any taxi cab operators, not just for his situation, I know we're discussing that, but because we don't have, you know, because for me, I would like to see driving record as well, because I'm not sure how many times he's been before the council, being new to the council, but with the information that's presented before us tonight, I would also like to see violations, suspensions, surcharges. That would be very important, especially whether we're gonna allow him to operate or suspend, whatever the decision will be, but that's something we should look at as well.
Here, here, the driver's license, the company, the taxi, we take the license and all the cars are done through the terrorist office, and they hear the issue. They do change cars, the new cars, the actual cars that make oil on the renewal, and the car, they keep the car in access, they do provide the certificate of insurance in the first board, the first office is providing which, the compliance car that is paid in the beginning to have that inspected and passed before they actually...
But that's, that's just for the car. I'm saying for the driver. Like my, what I'm, my point I'm making, I want to see the driving record of the drivers that are driving these vehicles, not as far as the car itself. That's one concern. But now, I'm really wanting to see who's driving these cars, that may or may not be insured. Well, we know some, most of them are not, but I want to see who's driving them, because that may be another concern that we're not even tapping into. I want to see the driving record. They could be driving with suspended license, driving with no license, but that information, I don't know if we're doing it already, but if not, I'm just looking to see if that's something that we could do from the administration side. Okay.
Taxi enforcement, actually, every time they renew their license, they have to bring an abstract, so taxi enforcement sees their driving record.
I request that information from the taxi enforcement.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so...
Counsel President? I don't know, but I just...
Okay, so Corporation Counsel. This item, item number thirty-seven, was a resolution to suspend the taxi cab registration, right? As per Madam Clerk, he is paid, so therefore, this item can be removed, am I correct?
He has met, from my reading, the standards that are outlined in the city code to issue to not have to suspend.
Okay.
You know, I've outlined some of my cautions. To the extent it is removed, I would recommend, again, that this individual be reminded that then it is only for the car that is insured. But again, I would strongly caution the council that we would always have to put up a very solid argument if something were to happen, and depending on the track record, because things happen. I understand insurance has lapses, things happen, but without knowing this individual's track record, some of the statements that have been made publicly, I would say that, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't outline that that may be an issue if this individual does not just operate the vehicles, the one vehicle that he would be entitled to operate.
Okay, so Mister Colazo, where's the rest of the issue?
The other vehicles will be added, a little bit out of time, because I lost drivers while I was shut down, so as the insurance company starts approving drivers, I'll be adding the cars back into the policy.
Okay.
Because for some, for this company, it takes them a while for them to run their license and make sure everything is good.
Okay. Mister Colazo, thank you. Councilman Colick?
Yes, Madam Counsel.
Yes.
So if there is a driver driving one of the vehicles without the insurance, and he get into trouble, for example, in an accident or something, the company is liable for it, isn't it?
Um...
Yes.
Or the, or the city?
The company is liable, but what I would caution is that creative lawyering tries to find bigger pockets, and in light of some of the information that's already been outlined, it would not be surprising if an attorney tried to find a way to pull the city into this.
So another one, the other attorney could put city in the litigation as well.
Can, can attempt to say, can attempt to bring the city, and I mean, you can, anyone can sue, but I, again, I just think that these items come before the council with the expectation that the council will do their due diligence in making these decisions. So that is the way that they attempt to try to hold the city liable, to say, was that in fact done? So my concern is some of the information that's been presented can be questioned at a later date if things don't go as we hope that they will go. I'd also potentially recommend that if there is, if people are unsure as to what to do with this, then this resolution is before you, and it can be voted up or voted down.
I have another question for you. For example, we suspend his license today. He come back on our next meeting with all his vehicle in the insurance. So then, we have to put him back, we have to give him his license back again, or?
He would have to meet the standards and apply?
I mean, he's gonna, obviously, he's gonna meet the standards. So he could be back in business within a week or two weeks, soon as he add all these vehicles in the insurance then.
It is...
The main issue right now is the insurance, because he have only vehicle in the policy.
Well, I would say the issue initially was the issues that were arose regarding the check payment.
Right, he satisfied that payment.
Yes. It's been proven that there has now been valid payment made, and that insurance is now in effect for one of the twelve vehicles. So that does not appear to be in dispute, based on the information I've received from the clerk.
So my, once again, if he add all these vehicles on the policy tomorrow.
Right.
So he could come back on the next meeting for reinstatement of his license, correct?
If this resol, I understand now, if this resolution were passed tonight, and then the next council meeting, he came back and said, if you feel better here, there's insurance for all the vehicles, all the cars, everything you want, then it could go back before the council, for the council to determine if they wish to approve him.
All right, sound good, thank you.
Madam President, can I say something? Mister Colazo, he paid for all the cars that he, he paid his three hundred fifty dollars for each car. I think he paid for all the cars for the dealer, and he doesn't have until March thirty-first next year. So if he had one car, the terrorist office would have to pay for these companies' car, so they can go to one, and he'd have the car there. The insurance company works pretty well with the terrorist office, any of these companies that, they're so inspired, they send, he made, and we're together, so generally, a company goes wrong with the company, but he did pay for all these twelve cars that the license is prior to next year, March thirty-first, and he has to be renewed again, and would have to pay his twelve thousand, and he has to, for those cars.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk, and I think, you know... the information that the clerk's office received. You've now come to us and let us know that he is now in compliance. I will say, though, I do have an issue on something, and that would mean that, and I am gonna put it on record, okay? It is very important to me that when anyone is doing business in the city of Patterson, and you have to pay, that you know that when you're writing out a check, you know that you have funds in it, and that it is an existing account. So that right there does not leave a good taste in my mouth when it comes to that. But at hand here, looking at item number thirty-seven, and this was the clerk who brought it before us, she has sent us information, which I read, and I was, council members, I wanted to know if you all felt that I should proceed, that we should proceed with removing item thirty-seven based on the clerk's report to us today?
Do you want to take it off?
Yes.
Oh, well, Counsel President, if I if I may, the, did the suspension have a period of time, or is it simply suspending, the recommendation was to suspend based on the information that was given to us?
Right.
That the payments were not made, right?
The insurance, the insurance company contacted the clerk, correct?
Right.
Right.
And that suspension would be pending, the company moving themselves into into compliance. I think this council has to be careful that we are acting on information in a timely fashion. I think the information that we had prior to this cited some concerns. I won't restate the the situation, Mr. Colazo, but you know that that puts you in in somewhat of jeopardy, and it it would be for the city not to, not to encourage that kind of situation. And I, too, am concerned that if, in fact, you had the twelve medallions or twelve cars registered, and you started out, well, just running one, it would be well understood. The fact that that you're outlining to us tonight what your operational plan is, just verbally, I'm a little concerned about that. I'd rather to have a written memorandum of understanding or writ- written organizational plan, that operational plan, that is, as to how you ought to, you will be operating. I don't believe that we have that sufficient data to put you back on the road.
Mm-mm.
Fully, and I think the suspension should be considered by the council until such time that you can satisfy the municipal council, that you will be operating in compliance with city code, motor vehicle code, and that you have a plan to secure those vehicles to make sure that they're not on the road.
I have twelve licenses.
Pardon me?
I had five, I had six vehicles. Two of the vehicles I already got rid of. I only have right now three vehicles under my name. There's twelve licenses. There were.
You're you're giving us, you're giving us all new testimony, and I think it's it's all, it's all, it underscores what I'm saying. I think the suspension should continue. We can place it at a a date and time to allow Mr. Colazo to to return with probably an attorney, with with a sufficient documentation, and with some operational memorandum that outline exactly what his situation is, and how he would be operating, where these cars would be located, and what cars would be on the vehicle, will be on the road, and so forth. There's also the need to respond to the circumstances of whether or not, as an individual, whether each taxi operator has to have a valid driver's license in of themselves in order to be even commissioned by this council. So I think Corporation Council may need some time to review the particulars of this case beyond what has been presented tonight, and to put that, to codify it, put it in writing, so that both you and the council is very clear as to what the terms and conditions are under which you will be operating, and what specific vehicles will be on the road and when. I don't feel comfortable saying, as I get the insurance, I'll begin to roll out or add another vehicle to the to the to the list. I think this council should have a complete plan as to how you will operate, and we should approve you for those vehicles that you have ready to go in business now, and to the extent that you need to add vehicles, you should be coming back to the council for additional action to put those on on the road. So, my my recommendation, Madam.
Is to keep it on.
Is to keep it on.
And vote on it.
And vote on it, and to sustain the suspension, and we could add a date and time that Mr. Colazo will have within the next thirty days or less to return back to the council with a full accounting of his situation, and a full written explanation of how he's gonna operate, and how he resolve the issue with the with the bank concern, and and all of that.
Okay. Thank you. Counselman Colick and Councilwoman Cotton?
I think this is wasting our time. If if there's, there's a resolution written to suspend this company, why are we accepting documents afterwards then?
At the time that the resolution was prepared, there was no dispute that he was not in compliance. So that was the per- that was the reasoning behind.
Right. We we had a, we had a lengthy discussion on our workshop. Tonight, we're wasting almost more than half an hour, but, you know, if if we're gonna suspend it, we should stop ex- accepting any documents to be coming in. So now, for example, if he came in with all the insurance card today, now what? Then if he comes back with his insurance card on the next meeting, we have to reinstate reinstate his company, correct?
Well, there, aside from not, you cannot, you you cannot, as a council, discriminate in your issuance of these type of licenses. However, people are not entitled to them. They have to prove that they are worthy of them and will provide an assist in the health and safety of our residents. So not every person who applies has to get one. You look at all factors associated with that application. So in this specific matter, if the council is inclined to remove or vote down this suspension, then it's with the understanding that he has his license, and he will have to come back and continue to show insurance for the other cabs in order to be able to operate them.
Okay.
So that's.
Co- 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 Corporation Council, be be, one moment, Madam Clerk. So, I I I'm a firm believer that we should give everyone an opportunity, and so if something is brought forth by my clerk, I'm going to accept it, and this was by the office who indicated they're not in compliance. She just said she has a close relationship with the insurance companies, where she's automatically informed when something is not right, when when cars are not insured and so forth. So the fact that she went forth with this, I do believe someone should come back and say, well, this is presented, and tell me your side of the story, kind of like. So, I I wouldn't say that it's wasting our time. I think we need to consider right now voting yes or no.
Right.
Okay, and not continue elongating this. I mean, I think we've heard almost every council member on this issue.
Counsel.
Counselwoman Cotton, and then Counselman Colick, I mean, Counselman Rivera.
Yeah, I just, you know, my only concern for Mr. Colazo is that the renewal was in March for the license. There was a problem at one time, about space, but, and and, correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, when did you get the okay for the one insurance that he received? Today or yesterday?
No, it was effective October, I mean, September, so I just have to take care of the car and.
Oh, four days ago.
And how many?
After 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 our workshop last week.
After the workshop, he provided me everything, and I just wanted to put this in the record. Even if a company has ten cars, or sixteen, or twenty, um, once they pay for these cars, they don't have to have all the cars insured, in working condition.
No, no, not working condition.
They pay for the.
Insurance.
They insure it, that's.
Oh, they don't have to have insurance?
They have to have insurance, but once they pay for the cars, they can have ten cars, and they can have just five in operation. So they don't have to have all of the cars, because some of the companies do have their license, but they don't have all the cars. And then they go along with the year, they do add more cars, and so.
No, Madam Clerk, I I I never, I I didn't know that's what was happening. Like, somebody got thirty cars.
Counselwoman.
Yeah.
Let us proceed with voting. Vote, vote your conscience, vote what you feel is is correct.
I mean, I didn't know that you have fifty license and and only one ten cars. All right.
Okay. Madam Clerk, roll call on item thirty-seven. We will proceed. I was gonna take it off, but I'm not.
I do, I do. I have a resolution to be explained in time, so we're going to speak here. Creating a first class transportation service, slash my car transportation service. Use the lap of insurance and provide a car. And you see, the other thing, I'm going to say, first, the resolution being to file for the company.
Moved by Councilman Rivera, second by Councilwoman Mims. Roll call on item thirty-seven.
Discussion. My apologies, Madam President.
Councilman McCoy, we've had a discussion.
I I understand, but Councilman Colick was very, said something that's very, very important, and if you listen to the rationale on the resolution, why we're suspending, the Madam Clerk read, by accepting the fee and accepting the insurance and clearing those items, those exceptions no longer exist at this time, and we have placed it on the record that those exceptions don't exist. So the rationale would have to be something different to invoke the suspension. So albeit that I would be previously inclined to suspend for a number of other reasons, the stated purpose of the resolution has been satisfied, and I would reluctantly would have to support, would have to not support the suspension because the conditions that were stipulated for the basis of the suspension have been resolved. I would caution Mr. Colazo that he still has open issues and concerns, and he ought to be very circumspect in going forward, how he execute that, and how he manages his affairs, because this, regardless of what this council does, there's still issues and concerns, separate and apart, from this body's authority that you must address. And I would support, and I think clarify for the Madam Clerk, the fact that you have authority for the medallions or for the number of slots is different from me having five or ten cars, all painted up and marked up, and 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 question as to whether I'm utilizing them or not. I think if you have ten medallions, it's one thing. Every car that's marked up and registered to you as a business opportunity should have its insurance and should be in place. If it's not in place, the registration should be taken off, the insurance should be taken off, and the vehicle should be stored someplace outside of the public domain, so that we have no confusion as to what vehicles are in play and which are in dry dry dock, which are in stock, if you would. So, for the narrow purpose of this resolution, I think we are, we are compelled to support it, albeit with a caution to Mr. Colazo as he move forward. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman McCoy, and I'm in tot-
We did not support that.
I'm in total agreement. Obviously, this is why I was going to proceed with pulling it, but we're gonna go ahead.
Remove it.
Remove it.
Look. Madam President, I think we're in the middle of roll call, Council President.
We need to act on it, so you're going to vote on it, and it's, so, let's proceed.
Madam President, can I make a suggestion? I mean, I would very quickly, I need to.
Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, I I don't want, I don't, I don't, I don't want to interrupt you at all. I want us, and I know there's a motion in the second, I'd like to proceed with it. If we vote it down, like, we, and then so be it. Okay, so.
Okay.
We'll roll call Madam Clerk on item thirty-seven.
If you vote on item number thirty-seven, item number thirty-seven, Councilman, I believe?
No.
Okay. Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Pass.
Councilman Bailey?
Well, I, I asked all all the questions to clarify the situation. Obviously, he has a registration and insurance for one vehicle.
Okay.
He could continue his business, business, and so I think there should not be a, if we keep taking those documents after after the resolution is written, then by the time the resolution come to come to the council, if he's satisfied with with the documents, then we should.
Pull it.
Pull it, then. Obviously, we did not pull this resolution, and I'm not ready to suspend the company. My vote is no.
No?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Procedurally, because the matter was already advertised in the agenda, we simply can't just pull it. I think it's a prudent action that we're taking, an affirmative action on it. As I indicated, the, by accepting the documents, the reasons for the suspension has been mitigated and are no longer valid, and therefore, I cannot support the resolution. My vote is no, to not to suspend, allow the operator to continue, with the proviso that he's operating one vehicle, and that should be absolutely clear, and and that's would be our expectation. My vote is no.
No.
So when this was presented in workshop, when the documents were not here, the issue with the check with the unidentified account, very, very serious concerns. And then we come back tonight, and then you provided it for one out of a fleet of twelve, and then their story of, you don't own some cars, you own two. So, I I'm gonna vote, but my concern is that, for the safety of of the people that will be riding in those vehicles, in that, in that vehicle, let me make it clear that it's singular. There's one car that's being cleared on tonight, and that the other vehicles will not be operating. And I'm definitely want to ensure that our administration keep a very close and keen eye to your business, to ensure that that you're not doing anything outside of those parameters. And so my vote will be no on tonight.
Thank you.
We need to improve our procedures here when people come before us to request licenses of any type. I've watched many meetings in the past, and I noticed how people have come here for liquor licenses, and you will ask one, one person a question, and you will ask someone else a separate question, that it just doesn't seem like it's, you know, at least to me personally, relevant. My vote is no at this time. We need to improve our procedures as a city. Voting no.
Councilman Jackson?
No.
Madam President? Councilman McCoy and my colleagues here, for the most part, all indicated, and thank you, Madam Clerk, for clarifying the information that was provided, and the resolution specifically was pertaining to insurance and CO. And so. And so he's provided that information. Um, I think the sentiments of most of the council members is that there's certain things that you're doing that probably, um, are perceived as not being correct. But that's not hearsay right now. On item thirty-seven, it's about two things. And, um, you have provided that information, so my vote is no.
The vote is one in favor? No.
You wanna change your vote?
No, no.
Okay. No, that's what I say, you. No, you were in favor of canceling it. You voted yes.
Yes, to suspend.
Yes. One in.
Madam Clerk.
One in favor.
One in favor, seven against.
No, Councilman Jackson, you voted.
She's saying, she's saying.
So you said it, because you say it.
No, no, there's only one in favor.
One in favor, seven. And one absent. No, item, no, this is telling you that it's about to be in operation. Yes, it might be, there's one seven, one seven, it's pending.
I mean, no, Madam Clerk, Corporation Council.
Yes.
Uh, items thirty-five and thirty-six both come from the administration. Are, are we able to? You wanna do one by one? Okay. Our Finance Chair, I know that this went through the Finance Committee. Madam Clerk, let's go with item number thirty-five. Read it into the record, please.
Next item, item number thirty-five, item number thirty-five, please. Resolution authorizing bonus contract for purchase of individual T-shirts. And this is for veteran's party, and it's been three days, number eighteen point two here, and the expiration of the resolution eighty-five.
Thirty-five.
Do you have a motion for item thirty-five?
Second.
Move by Councilman Abdelaziz, second by Councilman Colicke. Is there any discussion, councilmembers? I know we've had a discussion, but before.
We discussed in workshop.
Roll call Madam Clerk on item number thirty-five.
Vote for item number thirty, if you're comfortable, Councilman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilman Wynn? Yes, Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
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 Councilman Wynn?
Yes.
Councilman Wynn?
Yes.
And the President?
Yes.
The vote is eight in favor of one absent, item number thirty-five, hereby adopted.
Item number thirty-six, Madam Clerk.
This is item number thirty-six, resolution authorizing the award of contract as per the daily tourist supply for the purchase of individual, of daily tourist supply being under nineteen point four nine, for various departments and divisions, administration, resolution eighty-five.
So move. Second.
Who moved it? Councilman Jackson? Did you move it? Okay. Move by Councilman Jackson, second by Councilman Abdelaziz. Roll call on item nu- number thirty-six.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
The vote is eight in favor of one absent, item number thirty, hereby adopted.
Madam Clerk, item thirty-eight.
It's item, item number thirty, item number thirty, resolution authorizing private finance payment contract on the date of eighteen forty-four, five thousand thirteen, lot four oh seven, lot fourteen, eight, address eighty-eight dash nineteen, not six, three, and lot three three oh six, lot thirty, address four seven ninety, twenty way street, and lot three three one eight, lot thirty-one, address four seven three dash four seven nine, east eighty street, and lot seven five oh three, lot three, address seven oh two, east thirty street, final resolution eighty-five oh nine.
Have a motion?
Move. Some more.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Move by Councilman Colicke, second by Councilman Rivera. Roll call Madam Clerk on item thirty-eight.
Vote for item number thirty, if you're comfortable, Councilman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
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 Councilman Wynn?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Wynn? Yes. And the President?
Yes.
The vote is eight in favor of one absent, item number thirty, hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number thirty-nine.
It's item, item number thirty-nine, resolution authorizing the review of contract of eight hundred and thirty, the provision of eighteen, for ongoing, and we attend to, if you have a question, number thirty-seven, dash two, final resolution eighteen five one.
So move.
Second.
Move by Councilman Rivera, second by Councilwoman Mims. Item number thirty-nine. Do you have a, you want a discussion?
Councilwoman.
Discussion.
Yes.
Do you want a discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, move by Councilman Rivera, second by Councilwoman Mims. Discussion. Madam Clerk.
Uh, Mr. B., this contractor appraisal system, this is, so every year, this company goes out and does a reassessment of every property to, for the market value assessment?
That is my understanding. Uh, March, your own, our CFO is here, uh, she's familiar with this contract. My understanding is that this is the third year of a four-year contract in which this company does go out and does a reassessment of the city properties.
Twenty-five percent?
They have raised twenty-five percent.
Twenty, twenty-five percent, March? I'm hearing some of our council colleagues say twenty-five percent.
So, um, the first, the first year, I believe, was twenty-six percent, the second year also twenty-six percent, and this year as well, twenty-six percent, and the last year, I believe, would be the balance.
So this resolution is for additional three-year or just one year?
No, this resolution is just to award for the third year of a four-year. Um, two years ago, we awarded for one year with three-year renewals.
So this is one of the renewals of the three-year?
Right, this is the second of three renewals.
And this is for two hundred thousand dollars?
Two hundred thousand dollars a year. These are, these are services that actually result in a, um, tremendous reduction in the amount of, uh, tax appeals, both at the county level and the state tax court level.
That was my next question. So this is, this has helped us with the appeals and the refunds that we're given. So when, when people go for appeals, it's up to date, and then we don't have to refund any taxes.
Yes, that's true.
And that cost saving exceeds the two hundred thousand dollars, correct?
It sure does.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Council President?
Councilman Jackson?
Just wanted to point out, uh, to some of the newer, um, council members, previously, the, um, the reassessment or the reevalu- revow would, would only be done, it was done every ten years. So there was a enormous jump in the reassessed values. And back then, we, uh, we paid, I believe it was, um, uh, it was, it was a million dollars. It was a million dollars.
It was about, how much was it? It was, I believe, one point seven million dollars for the entire revaluation, including the appeals that followed that first year.
That, that includes the appeal or it did not include that amount?
Well, the court appearance by the revaluation firm.
Yeah, so, um, so by us moving to this, um, this, this, this method and paying two hundred thousand, the cumulative of the, of the years that we committed to the contract, uh, Councilman Abdelaziz, i- it was, uh, equivalent to what we paid for the ten-year revow. And it also benefit, it was a benefit by having the, um, far less tax appeals. So I just, I just wanted to point that out for some of the, uh, new members.
Thank you.
Councilman Jackson, your expertise and your, um, experience is greatly appreciated. Thank you very much. I appreciate you looking out for me, sir.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Just, just to, um, just to make sure that we, we're balanced the conversation, 'cause there, there's two schools of thought with respect to this, um, the one you've heard. The second piece is that, um, many of our surrounding communities, we're part of, per se, county, do not perform timely revaluation, evaluation of their properties. So whereas they're at less than a hundred percent, uh, Patterson is at a hundred and, maybe a hundred and ten percent of our assessed value, and it has to be balanced out to, um, the reassessment process that's used at the county level. There are those that feel that the changes, because they're only doing twenty-five, twenty-six percent or a portion of it, is equated to, um, spout evaluation, and that it does create a little fluctuation, um, within those individuals' mortgages, and I don't know, mortgage, um, calculates their taxes, and that it, it, um, creates a churn in the system that ordinarily would not be there, and in fact, put us at a disadvantage uh, in terms of the percentage of county taxes that we're paying 'cause our property value, um, is probably higher than it should be. My, uh, my thought was to have had the revaluation company give us a more conversation about the, the benefits of, of this process, um, and we didn't, we didn't get that, so.
Councilman.
Council President.
For a point of, of clarity, um, I do know, 'cause I was newly elected during that time, that we, the city of Patterson was sued by surrounding municipalities and forced to kind of raise our, our, our evaluation rate. But, uh, at this point, considering that information that you, that you're talking about, should we not be bringing light to the administration to possibly, um, look at what, what, what those, those values are? I mean, we have, um, you know, I'm not sure of, of Mr. Rivera, which, which your purview, which falls under purview of your, 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 your employment obligation with the county. But, you know, Patterson is being highly mistreated, and we feel as if that we're not on a, uh, level playing field when it comes to taxation, and then also equal distribution of those, those, uh, benefits from the county. So, uh, I think that we should also be looking forward to move, whether it's some type of, uh, lawsuit or, or just at least do an inquiry on where we are, to make sure that we, you know, we're not continuously being stepped over. Ne- ne- nevertheless, not, not to mention the fact that our fire department's budget is being increased just one line item alone, seventy percent for, for services that we're rendering to some of our surrounding, um, municipalities. So, um, you know, we'd love to see us visit some of that, um, opportunities, Councilman, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman Rivera?
So just to add to the discussion that we had in the committee, right, we looked at the pros and cons, and we determined in committee that we have to actually proceed with this year with a twenty-six percent, and we also have to finalize the final year. And then the council, we should, it should come back to us to see if we want to entertain starting the cycle again, right? We already did about fifty-two percent, according to what March said, we've done fifty-two percent. So if we stop it now, and I know from your comments, we're in favor, you know, a lot of you are in favor, but if we stop it now, those people that, you know, that were not reevaluated might be at an advantage or disadvantage depending on the market, right? So we have to, you know, we have to approve this one, basically. That's the conclusion that, that we came, we came with in, in finance, and also, we're gonna have to entertain it next year. But then for the new, if, if the administration want to propose it again, then we should have a lengthy discussion because I just don't see the use. As you know, the county does an equalized value, uh, an equalized, um, equalized value for tax purposes. That means that if a town didn't do the revaluation for five years, but we did ours recently, he, you know, they have a formula in place that would, you know, bring them all to the, you know, similar levels. The reason we got sued, and it's not entertained, but the, the reason we got sued in the past is because we didn't do a reva in twenty years, and that was the issue. But, um, we could just continue with the motion.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Rivera. Roll call Madam Clerk on item number thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine. Vote for item number thirty-nine, if you're comfortable, Councilman Wynn?
Yes.
Council, Councilman Wynn? Yes. Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
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 Councilman Wynn?
Yes.
Councilman Wynn?
Yes.
And the President?
Yes.
The vote is eight in favor of one absent, item number thirty, hereby adopted.
Thank you, uh, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, item number forty?
It's item, item number forty, item number forty, the resolution authorizing sale of three twenty-six dash three fifty-six in Washington Street, final resolution eighty-five.
Can I have a motion for item number forty?
So move.
Second.
Move by Councilman Colicke, second by Councilman McCoy and Councilwoman Mims. Roll call Madam Clerk on item number forty, if there is no discussion.
Vote for item number forty, if you're comfortable, Councilman Wynn?
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
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 Councilman Wynn?
Yes.
Yes.
And the President?
Yes.
The vote is eight in favor of one absent, item number forty, hereby adopted.
Thank you. Uh, councilmembers, the final item on the agenda is item number forty-four. Madam Clerk, please read into the record item, item number forty-four.
It's item, item number forty-four, resolution authorizing private contract in order on the site, and it's being verified, it's listed, site, and it's three thirty, and it's probably work, probably work, so the resolution eighty-five.
Okay, uh.
Move.
Move by Councilman Colicke, second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Abdelaziz. You have any discussion?
Discussion.
Discussion, Councilwoman Mims.
So I just want to be clear, this is a contract for landscape service at the, the Vista site. Where, where is this actually located?
This is behind, um, school five.
Madam, Madam President.
One moment. Councilwoman Mims has.
No, I'm, I'm, so it's behind school number five, so I just want to be clear. So this is for the ground maintenance, parks and shade tree.
The, the landscape.
And the amount to ratify the payment is thirty thousand dollars? So I mean, what are the details of what, what will be done?
This, this work was already complete, uh, two years ago?
Oh, it was done two years ago, so this is just to pay for the work that's been done? So then my question then will be, why did it take so long for payment?
Um, it went beyond the scope of the, um, the original contract.
So this, this is why, and I, that's why I asked the question. I've requested since day one of being on the council, um, since July first, that there is a desperate need for a program. that there is a desperate need for a program management office, where we have a project manager in place, so they can identify the scopes of projects, whether it's the budget, the timeline, the cost. Um, and we know that sometimes there are things that go outside of the scope, they go within, but they're able to build those through per chart, Gantt charts, to avoid situations similar to this, and I know sometimes financially, we're in those crunches as well. But that is why we desperately need, um, a program management office with a project manager in place to, you know, kind of avoid or offset some of these occurrences. So it's not to the work that's been done, and we know we need to pay because of the work that's been rendered, but we definitely need to make sure that, you know, and this is, um, through the administration, um, perfectly through the mayor, that we need to have in place a proj- project management office, not just for this occurrence, but for all of our projects, um, such as, um, the overlapping of digging up the grounds, laying, um, new roads, these type of things, so, um, that, that's just my, um, my request to the administration. Once again, the, um, definite need for a project manager. But I have no issues with this, that we did, we've done the work, we have to pay the bill.
No, that's not the case.
One moment, uh, Councilman Jackson, thank you, Councilwoman Mims, okay? Councilman Jackson, did you have a statement?
Yes, thank you, uh, Council President. First of all, um, the, the, the procurement process or RFP process is clear. When you have vendors who put forward an, uh, for a request for, or a grab of, or RFP, and they understand the process, they understand the way municipal government pays. They, they know that you don't do work prior to it being approved, and if you do, then, you know, you must have been doing it in, out of good faith and, and kind or gratis. Uh, furthermore, just for a point of clarity to some of the other council members that was in, uh, in here, this was a, 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 a job that was authorized by the former mayor, and he gave directive to do this job and, and felt as if he was gonna bring it back to the council for post-approval. That's not how the process works, and the vendor's completely aware. Not only that, but I, I really want, and, and if council members could just, you know, give me a, a quick second, I really want to utilize this moment to spotlight, you know, other instances. You know, just today, we had, uh, a, a disturbing article written in regard to the work that's being taken place now at, right acro- right across from there, at the great for, at the, uh, the overlooked park. They, this is a change order, more or less. This company was hired to do some services there, and then they expanded the, the workload without pre, prior approval. We just recently had a change order, which I definitely feel like we got taken to the cleaners on, to remove twelve inches of concrete. And then the vendor and, you know, corporation council, we, we really need to be looking to move on things like this. The vendor put forward a false claim that there was lead on the site, which could, could have potentially increased that bill by a million dollars. And their intent was to bring that forward back to this council, because that's how they regard this council. Just put it forward, they're gonna approve it, they're gonna, we're being taken, taken to the cleaners on all of these jobs. And, I mean, I, my personal recommendation is, the vendor knew, he's a big, 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 uh, 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 big boys, big girls, whatever, they understand the obligation that they put forward, they rendered the services prior to going through the process. We can't mitigate or negate the process, and the, the, the way we pay our bills is we approve things before the workload is done. We do not do things after. Am I, is that not correct, corporate council?
Um, Councilman Jackson, actually, I, I didn't want to interrupt. I did want, I was intending to bring that to the council's intention, because I did not want the council to think that this was just your standard paying of bills. The councilman is correct that there is some backstory, and per my understanding, this vendor was awarded a contract to perform certain services. He then was advised to do additional services that was not part of the contract. What is not in dispute is that the services were performed, and to my understanding, it was indicated to the satisfaction of the city. So we get more.
As per whom?
Uh, my understanding at that time, I believe, as per the, the, the Department of Public Works, as per the city officials at the time, that there was no, no objection raised as to the quality of the services performed. So the, the, the reason this resolution is before you, despite its sort of tortured history, is at the end of the day, we are in a position where a vendor has performed services, and your point is well-taken, as to vendors who work with the city should know the process. But they did the work, and the concern is, in a court of equity, will the city be able to not pay? That is a, that is a legal question, that could go either way. But when you consider potentially paying legal fees and costs, and potentially having to pay the bill at the end, that is what brings this resolution before you. But I intended on highlighting the resolution's history.
I, I think that if we, if we ta- begin to take the position of allowing people to render services, then come before this council to be paid after the fact, we, I mean, we, we'll have anybody saying they did a cleanup in the park, or they did, you know, they, they repaired the window glass in, in City Hall, and coming forward to get paid. The vendor understands there is a procurement process, there's a process for RFP. It, you don't render services and then come forward for, for payment. Is there any other vendor that's paid in, in this fashion?
I, I think the problem that we are confronted with is that the city doesn't have unclean hands. This isn't a situation where the vendor just thought, oh, let me do a little extra and come back and ask for the money. We, as the city, directed that he perform the service. So that becomes the issue, you know, as opposed to it being a gratuitous service that now they're asking for reimbursement.
But I'm, I apologize for interrupting corporate council.
Oh, no problem.
Is that actually the case? Because we, as the city, means that there is a process that's followed, and the council has an opportunity to chime in on that request. Because we, as a city, means that the council requested or approved the request by the administration. And if that process was negated, then we, as the city, did not request for this work to be done.
I, I agree with the argument that you are making. Um, the concern is really more of a practical one, which is not coming to it with clean hands, it being, it, it, a city official advising to do the work, the work being done, I think exposes us to the, uh, enhanced cost of fighting that fight. The fight that you are discussing is one that is, you know, I agree with and I understand it, and it is, um, well within reason, but that too comes at a cost. And I don't know, in light of the, the way that I've been informed that this contract occurred, that if this perhaps is the one we want to take, take on as the, the test case.
Okay, okay, that's, that's, Councilman Rivera?
I just want to make sure that the accountability goes back to, you know, understand what Councilman Jackson said. But we have a procurement law here. The job of a vendor is not to make sure that the administration presents to us a resolution for us to increase a contract. So, take, in tech, you, you mentioned this is a change order. I don't want to get into, uh, accounting technicality, but this is mostly a, something called a confirming order. That means we place an order without having a purchase order. So although it wasn't part of this administration that, that did this, it wasn't, you know, your doing, we have to hold department heads accountable, because this is what causes overspendages, overspenditures in the budget. When I started at the school district, in the finance committee, they presented us a bill of a million dollars for which we did not have a purchase order. That means that we, that we told the company to do the, a job, but never encumber the funds. So this right here could happen tomorrow, a department could call WB Mason, right? The check and balance that we have in place is, no department should ask for work or, uh, order supplies without having a purchase order. So I don't want to put the blame on vendors, we gotta make sure that we hold, you know, our staff accountable. And, and you asked a question, if other things, you know, if we have other, uh, other vendors being paid in, in a similar way, well, we passed a resolution today. We might owe, we might owe these lawyers monies for the month of June and July, of which they didn't have a contract, we just extended it today, if you think about it. But they performed their work, so we have to pay them. So I just want to make sure that we make it clear that it's not the vendor's responsibility to make sure that the administration and the council, well, the administration presents the increases to the council. We just gotta make, we just want to make sure.
Thank you, Councilman Rivera. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number forty-four.
Yes, Madam Clerk? Roll call, item number forty-four, approval, Councilwoman?
Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. On this item number forty, hopefully we will not see, no, I said forty-four, I'm sorry, nothing like this come through again. Or somebody, uh, just hopefully, because I saw what, you know, we knew kind of what happened, and, um, they did, they did do the work, and they had to be paid. It wasn't done correctly, but they still need to be paid. Uh, my vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
You know, um, I, I really try my best not to be, uh, we want to be able to, to be in one accord and understand, have an understanding of working collaboratively in certain things. Some things I just can't help it, I, I can't disagree more. You know, I, it's not my first rodeo, I've been a vendor. In fact, I was a vendor for the school board. Fed both football teams for a number of years. And part of that, I, I did out of compassion, when they, when their budget was, was, was shorted, I continued to feed them, and then all of a sudden they said, well, we'll, we'll see if we can find the money. That entire year, I fed both teams, never got paid, never. Because they said you rendered services and knew the, the, the process. We have vendors that anyone just comes to Patterson, and we, we allow them to do whatever it is that they want to do. We have to draw a line in the sand and say, listen, this is the line, this is what it is. We, we understand the process. We're, we're allowing people to, to, um, overlook that process, and, uh, I can't support that. You know, we have to be responsible and make vendors, hold them, hold them accountable. They want to take us to court for that, these certain things, certain fights are worth fighting. My vote is no.
Yes.
This is a very interesting, um, case, and I'm glad that we had the discussion here tonight. And in essence, what we have is acknowledging the process, um, was broken and did not work in accordance to the way it should. However, um, the chief executive of the city and agents of the city represented to the vendor that they were in a position to authorize them to do the work. They didn't do it voluntarily or without the goodness of their heart. They were directed to do the work, and, and consequently, the city is liable to, um, for that benefit that we receive, we have to pay for it. It's not the way it should be, um, um, we don't even have those folks to give them reprimand right now, because they are, in fact, been reprimanded. So we'll be, have to move forward and, and take care of this liability, much to my, uh, chagrin. And, uh, it's a word I learned from, um, Tom Giacchetti. My vote is yes.
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 Be- be- before we adjourn, I, I have.
I'm sorry?
Before we adjourn, I have a question.
Okay, one, one moment, Councilman Colleague. Okay, councilmembers, we are now done with the agenda. It is now ten fifteen, we will be, uh, can have a motion to close the regular... I'm gonna have you speak. You know, be- before, be- be-
Question that I want to ask is probably, uh, could be beneficial for the whole citywide.
Okay, Councilman Colleague?
Yes, uh, we know that, uh, PCNG doing some, uh, road surfacing, uh, specifically in the second world area. What I have seen is some of the roads are, um, half of the roads are being done, and they haven't been paid for, uh, years. What's the, um-
What do you?
What's, what's the ordinance or resolution is not being paid curb to curb?
The administration is...
I'm not sure what, what-
My, my, my question is, uh, question is that half of the road is being paid, and other half are not being paid.
You're talking about PCNG, when they break down and they come back, they only do half?
Repaving the, the roads.
They should be doing a curb to curb, instead of just doing the, right?
Right, correct. So, um, in other words, if we, as, as a city, if we don't do the other half, so whenever time for us to pave the road, then we have to do the whole road again. Maybe we should revisit our, um, the road surfacing project that, uh, uh, we had, the thirty-eight million dollar project. Probably we could use some of the money to finish those ro- roads completely, so that the, the, the city doesn't waste, uh, paving the complete road, um, when it come up for, uh, pavement.
I, I'll say, we've had several conversations with PCNG and Councilman Abdulaziz. I gave him a contact name and number, and perhaps I can provide you the same information, and they'll come out and explain to you what the schedule is, they're not gonna leave it that way. So perhaps we can take this offline, we can give you the right people at PCNG to talk to, and they can probably come out and explain to you the process and when they're gonna come out and finish the work.
No, yeah, Councilman Colleague, if I may, Madam President, um-
Councilman Abdulaziz?
Councilman Colleague is bringing up a good point, and we have our director of DPW, and this should be brought up in our, in our committee meeting at DPW. I think what the council is trying to say is, our ordinance for when someone, um, does construction on our road, I think what I was told, if the road was paved within the five years, and we dig into that road, that company must repave curb to curb. Now, some other roads are, that have been repaved more than five years ago, PCNG, because that's the big bulk of the work right now, only has to do half of the road. So Councilman Colleague is saying, if PCNG, if mistaken for wrong, if PCNG is already doing half of the road, we might look at our road resurfacing program and finish that road, so it's a completed road, which I, I agree with him, which is a bigger discussion.
And, and another thing, Pycnecev was paved in two thousand sixteen, correct, Director? By the county? But that's like a couple of years ago, but they're doing half of it.
From what I'm, I, I think the county also, I, the county, I spoke to the engineer at the county, because Main Street is a county road, and they repaved it two years ago, and they told me they're doing curb to curb. So, Mr. BA, what I think-
That's not the case on Pycnecev.
What I think the councilman tries to say, which I do agree with, we have this big infrastructure project that's going on, PCNG. It's happening throughout, everyone's ward throughout the entire city. PCNG is gonna be responsible to do half of the roads. I think the city should look at the roads that they're doing and see the cost for our part to finish those half, so we get, so we're pretty much getting two roads for one, because PCNG is doing. So if you got two roads are getting half, and we finish the other one, we're really getting two paved roads for a price of one. And that, you know, if we, I think it's a bigger discussion to look-
And I think we should take this up with the DPW committee and really kind of vet the issue through them. I know Billy's here tonight, but I think we need to have a further discussion about it.
Yeah, we, um, I have a meeting with our engineer tomorrow, actually, to go over this very issue, so, um, I'll send a report to the BA, and he can issue it to the council members.
Okay.
And Director, just real quick, when you meet the engineer, some of our roads, and if I'm not mistaken, some of our roads that we repaved or were paving, and PCNG dug through, I think when I had that discussion with the PCNG representative, they give us credit for that, those, I, I like to call square footage. So if we're repaving a road, we're, it's already in our road resurfacing program, and they dug in and they have to do half of that, that square footage could be used on a different road that we're not doing, so make sure we, we, we get as mu- many as possible when you talk to the engineer. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Move to adjourn.
Councilmembers, no, I'm gonna speak now. Councilmembers, please make sure, um, those that have not given, um, the meeting dates for your committees, uh, please refer to my- your committees, please refer to my, tomorrow to my secretary. I do have a list here of most of them, we're just missing Municipal Services and Patterson Restoration, which I know that you spoke, Councilman Rivera, of when those meetings are, correct?
Correct.
All right. The other thing I want to mention is, the City of Patterson, what did I do my... Is having a fair on September fifteenth. Do you have it? I just had it here and I don't know what I just did my, yes. So I wanted to mention to everyone that there will be a health fair. It is sponsored by the mayor as well as the City of Patterson Division of Health. It's called the Community Health Fair on Saturday, September fifteenth, which is this Saturday, from ten AM to two PM. There will be free screenings, information and much more, from flu shots to blood pressure screenings, HIV screenings, health education, STD screenings, child lead positive information, communicable disease information, TB, tuberculosis, and so much more, okay? There, it says here, free while supplies last. There will be school supplies, raffles, giveaways, smoothies, fresh foods, face painting and so forth. The address is one seventy-six Broadway in Patterson, New Jersey. And I'd like to thank some of the sponsors, Trader Joe's, Shopper of Pesake, Well Care, PPS Dental Services, Crunch, Patterson Municipal Alliance Prevention Program, and the Maternal and Child Health of Northern New Jersey. I cannot read the last one, but I just want to thank them all for participating and sponsoring this health fair this Saturday, September fifteenth. May I have a motion to close the regular meeting?
So move.
Moved by Councilman Adelaziz, second by Councilwoman Cotton. Roll call to close the regular meeting. Madam Clerk?
Before I vote, I just want to give a little council update. So our constituents in the sixth ward, today's a very sad day as we stated at the beginning of our meeting. The lone victim of the nine eleven attacks seven years ago is Kenny Lira and the Lira family is a staple in the sixth ward. I know if you've been around the Lakeview section, you've seen the house that Kenny Lira has lived in and the monument that is there and will continue keeping his legacy on. And the Lira family has done tremendous things. One of them is the upkeep of the park at School Twenty-Five. I'm telling you, it looks immaculate as Councilman Rivera lives across the street. He's even surprised how great that park is and they're putting tremendous effort to keep their son's legacy alive. I want to welcome back all sixth ward students back to school. Drive safely out there. We do have a speeding problem and that leads me to my next thing, speed humps. I'm still waiting for speed humps. Hopefully we get something in the sixth ward. Every meeting I'm going to say it till we see the one speed hump that comes. The summer's over, we had a successful movie nights. We met many sixth ward families, all three sections of the sixth ward, Peoples Park, South Patterson and Lakeview. We enjoyed our movie nights in the summer, that will be coming back, God willing, next summer. And last but not least, I am aware of all the debris, illegal dumping that goes on on the ramps of Route eighty coming off of Lakeview. I have been in contact with the Governor's Office and NJDOT. They are aware, we have a point person now and we're going to constantly keep up. If you do see any illegal dumping, please take a picture, send it to me. We have to stop it. We're situated in a bad, you know, Route eighty comes directly in the middle of our ward, so it's an easy dump and go. So we got to catch these individuals that want to come into Patterson and do this. And my vote is yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First, I would like to say before I vote that, and today was the nine eleven ceremony that the City of Patterson had. But I also would like to thank that, I would like to thank Mrs. Arnold, Scolero and Arnold's Funeral Home. And she had a program this evening for the nine eleven first responders and to please to fire the EMT. So I want to thank her, Scolero and Arnold Funeral Home for putting together a program for our first responders. Also, I want to remind you that we are having a meeting on September the twenty-sixth, even though I know it's two weeks away, but please keep that date in mind. And regarding to the Memorial Park for the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., which would be on Freedom Boulevard, Two Auburn Street at Bethel AME Church. And the meeting starts at five thirty, so keep September twenty-sixth for the discussion further for the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Memorial Park. Also, remember the last Thursday of each month is my SEPTEF meeting. And that's Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, that we meet the last Thursday of each month at Crossroads Ministry, five-eleven East Twenty-Second Street, is from five thirty to six thirty. Also, I want to re, Barbara Park, as one of my constituents said tonight, would be the first time that Barbara Park will have the clean communities in Barbara Park. That I can, and I'm just so happy that our Clean Community Committee here with DPW chose to do it in Barbara Park. And that's going to be September twenty-second at nine in the morning. Well, we start about eight, but please, if you can come out, please come out. And that's September twenty-second at nine o'clock. Barbara Park is going to have the clean communities. And let me say, the City of Patterson is number one for clean communities throughout this, throughout the state of New Jersey. Their clean community program is so overwhelming that cities come here to see how they put the clean communities together. Also, I just would like to, please keep in mind and pray for those in Georgia and South Carolina and North Carolina for Hurricane Florence. And pray that that storm turns in another direction and not hit Georgia, North Carolina, South Carolina, Virginia. No, it's not, it's hidden, but I'm saying, we need to, I have families in both those states and right now, they're evacuated to leave for Meadow Beach area. So let's keep them in our prayers that everything be safe with them. I also would just like to mention, and I'm almost finished, and no one said nothing about, we had a tragedy a couple of weeks ago. And I want you to keep these families in prayer for these young people. Darrell Tan, keep, which was killed, keep his family in prayer. And Ashley Nakima Keesley, you know, she was killed a couple of weeks ago and I want you to keep their family in prayer because it's just a tragedy. But we also have a young lady that's still in the hospital with the same, with this particular thing, Latoya Lassane. Let's keep Latoya in our prayers, let's keep her family in our prayers, that everything can work out. And I want to say that, I just needed to say that, to mention it with the nine eleven today and with so many things going on and you hear people say about violence and what we need to do in our community. And I always say that, we be the one to have to look out for each other. Without us looking out for each other, we're not going to be able to make it. So I want everyone out there to have a good night, a blessed night. Everything that I said tonight, please keep everyone in your prayers for me. And I want to wish you all well, God bless you. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll be very brief. I know, Mr. BA, we talked about not asking for many requests, but I will request today an update on the status and trying to figure out why we have certain individuals in positions evaluating certain projects. The Office of Historic Preservation does not necessarily outline that there's some expertise in construction and building. You know, this last episode that just took place is an example of why we need to have certain personnel in the city. We have a licensed architect as well as planner sitting in Community Improvements and Mr. Rumengoma, I mean, Mr. Milton Robinson. We also have Fred Mulgroon as our city engineer. So I'm wondering why we have these projects overseen and presented to the council by an individual who states that he does not or will not put his signature on his representation of that item. And the mere fact that the company was getting ready to come back to the well again, you know, speaks volumes. So I'm hoping that we can get a clear understanding of how these projects are being handled. I have been saying for years now that these projects are being mismanaged. Four million dollars for Henskirk Stadium and we only got an upper wall that's being constructed is an embarrassment to our community. It's an oversight to our kids that I don't think can be, you know, overlooked any longer. Three million dollars only for concrete structural surfaces. I think we're well, far, far overpaying for those jobs to be done. We need to have personnel in our, on our staff that can evaluate, what are we paying for? And, you know, leaving it up to the municipal council is not, is not, is not substantial. Council, council members have various levels of expertise and our expertise, even though mine may be a little different, but the council should not be having to be the last line of defense of contractors taking advantage of the city. So hopefully we can have that conversation further moving forward. But Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Good night, Patterson. My vote is yes.
Yes, good night.
First, let me say to all the victims, survivors, first responders of the nine-one-one tragedy over seventeen years ago that we will never forget. Also, I want to send my heartfelt condolences out to Councilman Velez, his wife Evelyn, and their family in the tragic loss of their son. I want to welcome back all of our students, teachers and administrators, praying that you have a successful year filled with academic excellence. Looking forward to collaborations with our Patterson school system because I truly believe that our children matter. Also want to invite everyone to the Nicaraguan flag raising tomorrow at four thirty here at City Hall, here at one fifty-five Market Street here in Patterson. Also, before my last comment, I requested it before, but I'm asking again for an update on the road resurfacing plan with the full schedule and target dates of completion so that we can have that information readily available for the constituents. They are continually asking. And I think if we have that plan, we can look at that plan with the update that public service provides when they're coming out to do before you dig so that we can assist in ensuring that we're working collaboratively together. Also want to invite everyone here in the city, super excited, it's my fifteenth year of doing the Breakfast of Champions where year after year I have honored individuals and groups that continue to make Patterson better. And so this Saturday, the fifteenth, from nine AM to twelve at the Brownstone here in Patterson, three fifty-one West Broadway, the tickets are fifty dollars. We will be honoring nine individuals and three groups. And because some of them, because they're really amazing individuals that sometimes never get honored, I feel it necessary to announce who they are and the honors that they will receive. We will be honoring with the governmental award, three individuals, Mayor Andre Seiya, Councilman Lawrence Velez and Councilman Robert Artist from Prospect Park. Education Award, we will be honoring Ms. Joanne Riviella and Mr. Gerald Gleason. I am super excited, from DPW, one of the supervisors will receive the Better Patterson Award, Mr. Michael Jackson. We have two millennial awards, we have Gilman Chowdhury and Jasmine Kennedy. With the Business Award, Mr. Colbert Ahmed. The Business Award, Newsplash. Community Award, Patterson Ceasefire. And Mature Sisters will as well receive a Community Award. If you need tickets or more information, it is this Saturday at the Brownstone from nine to twelve, please contact me. My number is nine seven three, nine zero two, nineteen fifty-seven. Thank you, God bless this great City of Patterson. My vote is yes.
So viewers at home, I just want to say that although you see an interaction between us, the council and the administration, we share a common goal, which is to make the best decisions on behalf of the residents. I have confidence, the discussions that I had with this administration, they do understand that change needs to be made and change takes time. So I just want to share that with you. Just because you see us going back and forth doesn't mean that we're not working together. We're just making sure that we act responsibly. My vote is yes and good night.
Before I vote, it was brought to my attention and various constituents' parents have not only posted but called me, texted me concerning the safety of their children. There was an incident today where a few young ladies were being followed by a white van. So I'm just going to ask parents, if you don't work, please make sure that, you know, walk with your children, fathers, mothers, brothers, sisters, and anyone out there, please let them know if anyone is approaching them, I mean, just have the conversations with them. So to our Public Safety Department, to our director, to everyone, please, I am aware that you're aware of what's going on, but I just wanted to put it out there to be very careful. I also wanted to, again, I was both days on Sunday and Monday at the funeral service and the wake and the funeral service for Evelyn's son. And truly, as a mother, my heart was broken. So I just wanted to just let her know that, you know, there's many people praying for you and that, just have faith. Finally, council members, I hope that not only do you come to the Nicaraguan, Nicaraguan says, flag raising, but there's also a Guatemalan flag raising on Sunday, September sixteenth. So you are all invited as well. The information will come through the clerk's office. I'll make sure to get you that tomorrow. Patterson, thank you. Have a good night, council members. Thank you, Patterson. Good night. My vote is yes.